Call the meeting to order. Mr. Campbell, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll observe a moment of silence.
Shivi.
Here.
Brackus.
Here.
Zadra.
Here.
Delgado.
Here.
George.
Here.
Kachel.
Here. Ms. Zadra did call in and said she'll be a few minutes late. I'll go to public comment. Stan Kennedy. Morning. Identify yourself for the record, please.
Stanley Kennedy.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm here to find out about our hot dog cart downtown. The mayor told us that he would look into it at the last meeting, and we've heard nothing about it. Lexus did grant us permission for the regular hours, 10 to 10, but we had asked for the extended hours, and we got no answer on why we couldn't have them as we did have them last year. Because of the finances, that's where we actually make our money. And we've tried to do everything as asked, all the permits, licenses, and I just don't understand, in my mind, why not? We have guitar players, artists, other people that have no limits on their hours, they can stay there all night. We wanted to just stay up until maybe 12, 1 o'clock. So I don't, we never got an answer last week, so we're here to see if we can get one this week.
Mr. City Manager, would you have staff get in touch with these people and meet with them during the meeting or after the meeting? And you have met with them?
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we did get an update, sir, from staff that they had visited with you, and I need confirmation so that we know where to send you. It sounded like it related to your application for special event, and that maybe that's, is that right? That's kind of what I took from the...
Well, let's have staff get with them and stuff, and then we can get it back to the table here. We'll do that, sir.
All right.
We'll have somebody meet with you now. Dan Kennedy, you wish to say something different?
No.
All right, sir, thank you.
And I didn't see that they were copied on the memo, so that's, my question is, did they receive the memo?
There was communication, and it indicated that you opted not to...
Come up to the podium, tell us what you've done, and let's get on with this.
The city manager's office has not sent Stan and Dan the memo, but I can go print it out and give it to them.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And will there be time for them now? Because the memo said that they opted not to apply to the special event permitting time period.
They may apply.
Will there be some guidance?
Yes.
Okay. David Texlar? I hope I didn't butcher it too bad, David.
As long as it's spelled right on any check I get, I don't care. Good afternoon, Mayor Kachel, honorable council people. My name is David Shekar, independent artist. We've all seen those GEICO commercials that are entertaining about all the bad things that will happen. Well, this is also a GEICO commercial. But what this GEICO commercial is, it says, it's an acronym, Get Educated, Install Constitutional Operative Law concerning the fundamental difference between a hot dog vendor and an artist. Here's how that GEICO commercial will play out. City of Reno enforcement officer unable to determine the difference between a hot dog vendor's rights and an artist's rights issues a citation to the artist who is exercising his fully protected First Amendment rights to draw pictures in the city, despite the fact that the artist was abiding all the time, place, and manner restrictions. It was not interfering with any other commercial activities. As a matter of fact, his presence is probably beneficial to the hot dog vendor because when an artist is drawing at an easel, people are watching him, no matter how bad it is, and that just attracts more people to the hot dog vendor. It does not detract from his business at all. Also, the Reno Municipal Code requires artists to abide by time, place, and manner restrictions. As a person who's trying to be a better artist, I have to abide by those restrictions. I'm happy to do that. So the artist goes to federal court, and the federal court judge says, "Why are you here? This has been already well settled," about the rights of the difference between a hot dog vendor and an artist. The case of White versus City of Sparks, 2007, is a preeminent landmark civil rights case governing what artists can do. So the judge says, "Well, this is well settled, so we're going to have to sue the city. Don't want to, but we're going to place economic sanctions on the city." The city goes bankrupt, and to gain money, they decide to hold aardvark-throwing contests. And they throw the aardvark at the wrong person. He gets hurt, the city gets sued. So don't throw aardvark-drawing contests and allow the city to pass constitutional codes. Thank you.
Thank you. Johnny Larkins.
My name is Johnny Larkins with Save Protect Foundation. First of all, the Honorable Mayor, sir, I was here last time, and I invited you to our domestic violence game Heroes with the 49ers playing against the Reno firefighters, and you told me you would be there, and you kept your word. I respect that, and I respect even more that your friend was in the hospital and you still showed up. And I heard he recently passed, so my condolences, because it's hard to lose a friend or a family member, so, and sometimes it's hard to tell the difference because they're close to you. So my prayers for you and your family. Reason I'm here today, we have a problem in our community, and it's bullying. Our children are getting bullied, picked on, and they act like they have no other resources but to act out. The recent shooting in Sparks Middle School, the kid was a good kid, you know, you'd think he'd be a monster because he shot a couple of people. One of our heroes died, a teacher that was a Marine that protected his country, and then died a hero protecting our children. This kid was 12 years old, in the band, you know, had all kinds of wars from his principal because he was a good kid, working in his father's restaurant, and because he had a speech impediment, he was different, he was picked on. And it wasn't an individual problem, it was a community problem. And we want to make sure that we do something for our kids, make sure they know they're not alone. We have a program called Bowling Down Bullies at Grand Sierra, March 15th, from 10 to 3. We want to make sure we have shirts printed out on the back. If there's been cyberbullying, physical, emotional bullying, that they have a number they can call. You know, we want to give our pride, we want to celebrate that they are loved, that they're cared about in our community. We also going to give our $500 scholarship, make sure they know that, hey, we're trying to help you any way we can. If we don't come together as a community, we're going to fall apart as individuals. You know, we have armed safety button which we created to protect children and women from harm. This app was created because my daughter was raped on her 13th birthday and could identify her attacker or where she was. This app, you touch it one time, brings up your camera, GPS, and your flashlight on your phone. If you, someone comes within 25 feet trying to harm you, you slide it one time, alarm sounds, start taking pictures of your attacker, send it to the database within three seconds. So you hear somebody smashed their phone, it's in the database, they can't get rid of it. You know, with sex trafficking, kids being abused, women got restraining orders, and by the time the police shows up, the guy's already gone. There's no proof he was even there. We need to take back our streets and our families and make a better future for them. And hopefully I get support from the panel here, and if the mayor can help me out, reach out to some of his important friends to help us pull this off, it'd be great. And one more comment, I've got 14 seconds. For all the naysayers that talk about Mayor Kachel, they need to know that he cares about the city. He is a good man, he's earned my respect, and you don't understand what he goes through on a daily basis, and he should earn your respect, not your... Well, anyway, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
By the way, I've seen your app, and it's impressive, and I think that it can save lives, and I really commend you for what you've done.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good afternoon. I have a... I'm sorry? Van Pelt, Michael Van Pelt. I have a couple complaints about the new garbage system that's just been enacted. I have here three contracts with Waste Management that says that they're supposed to be through the end of March of this year. When I call the garbage company, I find out that the, it was gone from seven cans, 224 gallons per property that I own, down to one, at 32 gallons. I'm concerned, I'm wondering why there's a mandatory garbage, is one question that I had. They have my address. How long that contract is for? And when I call the company, I get nowhere. No one knows anything. But here's the contracts, but I got some calls from several of my tenants saying that I bought two of the properties brand-new last year and went out and purchased garbage my own. Now I can't use them. That was effective Monday, a couple days ago. So I'm out that, plus I have irate tenants that are telling me that they can't, they have one garbage can. When I call the company, they said, "Oh, well, you have a recycling garbage can." I don't know what that's all about. So I, that's my comment. I called his office seven times, couldn't get hold of him. Okay, thank you.
And, Mr., later on, I'm going to be asking that we have at a subsequent meeting an update on our process to address citizen complaints about the contract. We've had our first one today, and I think there's a question on what our dispute resolution process will be, so Mr. Getty's can keep you informed of that also.
Well, when I did call, when I did call the company, they said, "Well, that's the way it is."
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council people. My name is Mark Markell, Speaker Reno resident. I'm here today to... Hi, my name is Mark Markell, and my mission in life is to educate students and the community... I'm sorry, I don't talk well. And the community about drink, about getting in the car with a drunk driver. I'm reading from this today because I suffer a traumatic brain injury, and I get off track. I was in a coma for a month, and once I regained consciousness, I had to learn how to talk, walk, and even eat all over, all over again due to a traumatic brain injury. It's a drag, people. You shouldn't get in the car with a drunk driver because you can end up like me. Anyways, I can't, I can't do tests. I walk with a walker. I have...
No bad sex.
Sit down! I'm sorry. And I walk with a walker and have to take the bus everywhere. Through Mark's bad, people against drunk driving. I hope to prevent others from suffering the same mistakes and suffering the same consequences I have. Parents, don't drive drunk with your kids in the car. Kids, listen to your parents. They were young one time, eh? And listen to your teachers. They just want to make good citizens of you. They are there to help you. I never listened to either one, and look what happened to me. My life is changed completely as a result of getting in the car with the drunk driver. Please don't end up like me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Very good message.
Sam Denae, Encyclopedia Reno Government, and the father of Reno's best bet for mayor. And by the way, I support this young man's efforts to help the young children. As a matter of fact, if you go to that bowling operation he's got going, I gave them one of my unique music albums to raffle off. So there you go.
That'll put you in the hole.
And at any rate, and he said, "Thank you." The, I'm looking at the new, I'm an Air Force Academy graduate, I spent many years flying fighters and bombers, defending our nation against enemies inside of the border and outside of the border. And I also applaud Mr. Markell, who comes here week after week of his own volition, and I've heard his message many times, and it seemed like it gets old, but it doesn't. Every time I hear it, it reminds me not to drive when you're drinking, or not to drive with somebody else who's been drinking. At any rate, I was looking at your new rules and regulations that are, take up the whole front page of this thing, and Mr. Mayor is always, Mr. Kachel is always very, very lenient and polite with the citizens who come to the podium. But I want to tell you what, what the term disruptive, I don't like the word disruptive on here because it is so subjective. The Supreme Court put freedom of speech, the First Amendment, in plain English in 1959 unanimously, and they said, unquote, "As Americans, we have the profound national commitment to the principle that debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open, and may well include vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasantly sharp attacks against government and public officials." As a matter of fact, that is what we should be thinking about when you're at the podium here. You don't have to come to the podium to kiss up to these folks, you should actually be coming here most of the time to criticize them. Not that I do that, by the way. I want to say a thing or two about the career politicians permeating our community. Right now, there is a, some brouhaha down there at the Nevada Supreme Court, and I think it's just a big waste of time. The city charter, the city law says, "The mayor is a member of the city council." Notwithstanding what the judges might come up with out there, it doesn't really matter. With an honest election, any voter with an IQ over 50 would know they do not want to vote for the same people who got Reno into the terrible financial predicament that it is in right now. So if we had an honest vote, nobody who has been on this council for 12 years would ever be put back on this council again, and that is nothing personal against any of these career politicians, it's just a fact. It is not logical for the same people to be put back in. Right now, on that ballot, there will be a young man who was the challenger last time. You've never seen his name in the paper, ever, ever, ever. He was only a few thousand stolen votes, a few thousand votes away from being the mayor of Reno. You never see his name. He's a Marine Corps veteran who has this city's best wishes in his mind. He's out there in the wings waiting, waiting to come in here to this city council and heal Reno.
Oh, thank you very much. Having no other public comment cards, I will close the public comment section. I did not steal any votes.
I'm sorry, did you say something?
No, sir, I was just talking to my colleague next to me here. City manager announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wanted to announce the Reno.gov video contest. Last month, we showed you the newly redesigned Reno.gov website. The goal of the site is to get more residents engaged with the city, which is also a priority of this council. As part of this effort, the Office of Communications and Community Engagement is holding a video contest. The contest, which begins on February 18th, offers residents a chance to win a grand prize of $1,000 for submitting the best short and entertaining video on how they use the Reno.gov website. The deadline for the contest is April 1st. Once the videos are submitted, staff in the Office of Communications and Community Engagement will choose 10 videos and allow everyone on social media to vote on their favorite video. The video with the most votes will win the grand prize. Also, two other announcements. One is the Washoe County School District Community and Safety Forum. Senator Debbie Smith and the Washoe County School Board would like to invite the city council and residents of the Truckee Meadows to attend an upcoming Community and Safety Forum. The forum will be held on Wednesday, March 19th, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Reed High School. The community forum is about addressing safety concerns and beginning to heal in the aftermath of the violent tragedies that have affected our community. There will be a panel that includes national safety experts, local law enforcement, school officials, mental health professionals, and others who have experienced similar tragedies in their communities. There's also a series of other workshops that the Reno Police Department, working with the Nevada Military Support Alliance, as well as the Washoe County School District, will be hosting. There will be several workshops on dealing with violence in schools. There will be one for the community, and there will be one for the Washoe County School District faculty, one for law enforcement officials, and then there will also be a workshop for elected and local government officials. Those workshops will be on March 13th and 14th. Reno Police Department will be sending out invitations next week for that workshop. They will have Colonel David Grossman as their speaker for that event. It'll be at the Convention Center, and it's free of charge.
Okay. Any other announcements?
That's it.
Okay, before we go to approval of the agenda, we will be moving the consent agenda before proclamations and presentations. We also will be moving item L7 and L8 will be made right after presentations. I am recommended that item J21 and J22 be continued till the 26th. Item J21 and 22, because of information we received late yesterday afternoon, and so we will not be hearing that today, we will postpone it until the 26th. The public comments, 12 o'clock, proclamations today on Collin Ranch, presentations, economic development, Truckee Meadows tomorrow, and presentation, safety and health achievement. Public hearing, item F1, amendment of Todd, F2, time extension parking lot, and item F3, Regal's Burger annexation. There is no public hearing this evening. With those changes, any other changes? Anybody have? Have a motion second? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Approval of minutes of January 29?
I motion.
Have a second? Have a second? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Cash disbursement, item B1. Anybody got any disclosures? Chair entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion? Have a second? Have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now we go to the consent agenda. Any items pulled for discussion?
E8.
E8?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Brackus, E8? Any others? Chair entertain a motion for approval of all the others?
Excuse me? No public comment?
No public comment? Any, give me a motion. Have a motion? Have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. E8, Ms. Brackus.
Question for staff. Ms. Olson, I think at the time you wrote the staff report, bids hadn't come in for these items. What were the bids for the press?
For the record, Jill Olson Finance, the Heidelberg Press had two bids, the high bid being $1,050.
So we were going to get $5,000 from Washoe County, you know, and now we've marked down this $4,030?
Well, we didn't mark it down, that's now the current offer.
Yeah, and then what about the cannons? We took out a, was it a medium-term obligation debt?
We just had a lease purchase.
Okay, because the staff report says that we're financed, but it was...
Through a lease purchase.
Through a lease purchase, from the vendor or so?
Yes.
When did that lease purchase, okay, so have we, how much did we pay for these? In 2007?
We've completed, I think the initial purchase price was $400,000 for all of them.
Okay.
Does that sound right?
Well, yeah, okay, so $373,000.
$373,000.
Were these interest zero, zero, did they carry, like, we're getting carried on?
It was a low interest rate, it wasn't zero, though, I believe, but they're all fully depreciated.
Okay.
Two of them have over a million copies. They have no value on our books.
So they've been written down, but what, what did the bid come in for these?
Two of them did not receive a bid. We have received a bid for one of them. I'll let Matt give you the details, because he understands the different copiers better than I do.
Matt Taylor, for the record. The large printer, we received a bid for $12,000 on it, and the other two, they were suggested that the other two printers should be classified as, not surplus property, but to be used for scrap pieces because they had over 5 million copies on them, so they had no value.
So, so copiers that you pay almost $400,000 for in 2007, you know, seven-year life, is, I mean, is that standard? That's a, that's a real fast...
Pretty standard in business.
Okay.
In the business world, we get rid of them sooner than that.
So we got our life item, we're good. I guess the reason I'm bringing this up is, this is our first year with the outsourcing to OfficeMax, and I'm seeing the accounts payables just really every month, every, you know, month or every other, twice a month, a lot of money going out on that contract. Are we burning out through that pretty quickly, and are we comfortable that this relationship of outsourcing this service is working for us?
Robert Chisel, Director of Finance and Administration. Yes, we do believe so. We're going to do an analysis, as we always do, and review it. You've got to remember, if we didn't outsource, we would have to be replacing these copiers and this equipment, which, as you noted, was very expensive, and we would have to be capitalizing that all over again. This equipment had reached its end of useful life.
Okay, motion second? Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Brackus, you want to handle item C1, proclamation, Collin Ranch Homeowners Association.
Mr. President, you all want to come up? Brings me great pleasure to present this proclamation because I've been watching the progress of this exciting sustainability effort in West Reno, so here goes. I'm joined here with members of the Collin Ranch Homeowners Association Board and their staff, and we'll introduce them after I read the proclamations.
and, uh, their, um, staff, and we'll introduce them after I read the proclamation. Whereas, the Collin Ranch Homeowners Association discovered that they possess water rights to the steamboat ditch that are not just flow-through rights, as had been believed for almost three decades, and that they therefore have the ability to irrigate the di, with ditch water rather than from water wi, from the municipal system. And whereas, the water project was completed at a cost of almost $800,000, and Collin Ranch Homeowners Association was able to complete the work with funds on hand. And whereas, from mid-June through mid-October 2013, Collin Ranch Homeowners Association has saved just over $125,000 in irrigation costs compared to the same period from last year for water used to irrigate large common areas. And whereas, the successful startup of the water, water project in June made it possible to put more steamboat ditch water in the creeks, ponds, and irrigation system at far less cost, and the homeowners are commenting that the ranch has never looked better, more flowers in more locations, a greener green belt, and great fall colors. And whereas, the Collin Ranch Homeowners Association has recognized Alum Creek is tributary to the Truckee River, and as such, has developed a proactive stewardship and education program to protect the creek from pollutants and erosion. And whereas, the use of steamboat ditch water for landscaping decreases the amount of water needed to be treated and delivered by the Truckee Meadows Water Authority and supports water conservation efforts. And whereas, the water proj, project supports the council priority to provide safe and livable neighborhoods. And whereas, the City of Reno would like to congratulate and commend the Collin Ranch Homeowners Association and its staff and landscaping crew for their accomplishments with their conservation efforts. Now, therefore, I, Jenny Brackus, on behalf of the City of Reno and Mayor Kachel, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, February 12th, 2014, as Collin Ranch Homeowners Association Recognition Day. Thank you very much, and I'll present this to Lori Olson. Thank you for all you do. If you'd like to introduce Mike, yeah?
Thank you very much. I'm Mike Kefner. I'm the former president of the Board of Collin Ranch. I'm joined by Lori Olson, our general manager, Mike Chern, who's taken over as president of the Board, and Randy Lisenby, who is our landscape superintendent. He's the guy that did all the work. Just briefly, thank you very much for this honor. I'll make no bones about it, we started this project because we wanted to save money, not to save the world. But as this project proceeded, as we engineered it and as we built it, a much bigger issue came to our attention, and that is that Alum Creek, which flows right through the heart of Collin Ranch, exceeded several of the EPA thresholds for pollutants. So, we undertook to address that issue. Now, you fast forward to today, and we have made a major goal for 2014 to do sampling, uh, analysis, and ultimately to lead to remediation of Alum Creek. So, we're gonna do what we, we're gonna control what we have control over, and we're gonna try to influence those things we don't have control over. So, we will continue to work with your staff in doing that. And I would say finally, I don't think, uh, council meetings are much different than homeowner board meetings. Very few people come to the, to a council meeting to s, to give you an attaboy. Uh, very few people come to a homeowner's board meeting to do the same. So, I would just like to give you a special shout-out. Throughout all the issues that we have dealt with over the years, fire protection issue, getting the bears out of our garbage cans, the water project, and now the Alum Creek remediation project, it has been such a pleasure to work with council, and especially to work with your staff. And a special shout-out to Jason, to Terry, Linell, who's not here, I don't think, and Jenny, to you, for all the support you've given us as we've worked through all these issues. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Thank y'all. Uh, at this time, uh, I'm gonna juggle the agenda around a little bit, go to item D3, presentation, safety and health achievement recognition. Sharp award to City Reno for Reno Stead Water, Bruce Breslow to the Director of State Department of Business and Industry. We will handle that now. Mr. Breslow, good to see you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, it's good to see you. Come on up. My name is Bruce Breslow. I'm director of the Department of Business and Industry for the state. In essence, responsible for 13 state agencies, two nonprofits, 18 small business programs, and about 20 boards of commissions. Of our agencies, the most beloved agency I know in all of your minds is always OSHA. You never hear about any OSHA complaints. But the, the positive face of the Department of Industrial Relations is OSHA's little brother, which is out on the forefront, called SCATS. SCATS is a program that goes out for free to businesses and does an assessment and a safety analysis for them. No fines, just, it, it's a business tool. You wanna get SCATS out before OSHA comes to visit you. Well, SCATS has been awarding to one of your projects, a special award now for the fifth time. There's only three others that have ever had five Sharp awards. A Sharp award is for safety and health achievement recognition. And what this means is that you're exempt from a scheduled OSHA examination this year. And the City of Reno Stead Water Reclamation Facility has continuously been winning these things. If you do it again, it'll be the only time in history that somebody has won it six times. And from what I hear from you all, there's a good chance that you will do that again. So, I'd like to turn to Andy Giddings, who represents the SCATS program, to present the awards.
Thank you.
Andy Giddings, for the record. Um, I'm the SCATS Consultation Supervisor for Northern Nevada. Uh, this is the only government entity in the Sharp program in the state of Nevada, um, we have now at all. We have no other government entities who even have applied for this. And they've done it five times, and it's exceedingly well-done this year because of the changes they've had. Usually, when we have management changes or major turnovers in a Sharp program, in a year, it usually falls to the wayside because it can't be maintained. But they've lost their main water operator this year, and they have a new engineer in charge this year, but they maintain the, uh, service, they maintain the levels required. Because to be in Sharp, you must be above and beyond the industry standards nationwide to stay in the program. So, their, their rates are way up, well below, and the site is exceedingly well-maintained. Um, who am I, who's going to accept?
John.
Okay. We'd like to present the Sharp certificate for the Reno Stead Water Reclamation Facility for the fifth time.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for the record, John Flansper, Director of Public Works. I want to commend staff as well. Uh, they have had a difficult year. Our senior operator passed away this last year unexpectedly from cancer, and, uh, it was a very trying time for staff, uh, but they maintained, uh, their, all the requirements that we needed to have. We had a change in engineering with, uh, Mr. Drinkwater leaving for the Truckee Meadows plant manager position, and so Terry Svetich has taken up that role, uh, with the engineering for environmental and, and on the administrative side as well. So, a big shout-out here to Robert Zonchi, Justin Mercado, and Tom Pugh for the work they're doing at Stead. Thank you.
Thank all of you.
Mr. Mayor, final comment, if you don't mind?
Don't mind at all, sir.
It has been a long time since I've had the pleasure of standing before Reno City Council. I believe I was about a 36-year-old mayor of Sparks, asking the city council not to approve Rosewood Lakes because one day, the people who live there would not want to have a road that was planned to go through there. I want to also commend you for stealing all the great staff from the state of Nevada that I see around this room today, and they're smiling.
Yes, sir.
That's wonderful.
Thank you.
On behalf of, of, of the state of Nevada, we're very grateful for the cooperation that we have with the City of Reno. And we look forward to it in the future, and if there's ever any time anybody needs anything for financial institutions, insurance, housing, mortgage lending, manufactured housing, OSHA, SCATS, the Labor Commissioner, the Athletic Commission, or the other agencies, just call, and we'll be there.
Thank you very much. We appreciate working with you. Thanks a lot. All right, now we'll go to item, uh, D1. Mr. George, take over a minute.
Mr. Mayor and council members, for the record, Bill Thomas is the city manager. As you know, and really for the benefit of the public, we have this item on the council agenda each meeting to recognize, um, some of the wonderful things that are going on in our community. When the, uh, economic downturn started, there were a lot of negative things said about us, and we knew, and the council knew collectively, that there were a lot of things that are really good about our community. So, that's the purpose of this item on your agenda. We have today a very special presentation from Matt Schultz, who's the executive director of The Generator, um, which is a new collaborative art space on Ice House Avenue. And I'm sure Matt will explain the details of what his operation is, but, um, in short, Matt is, has been very active in creating art for Burning Man, and has used his skills and knowledge and, um, artistic talents to open a 34,000 square feet, square-foot creative space, which is open to artists. So, um, I'd like to introduce Matt to you, and I'm sure he'll explain to you The Generator.
My name is Matthew Schultz. I'm the executive director of The Generator in Sparks, Nevada. Um, we, um, we kind of tried to chase down, uh, an idea, vision, that started about five years ago. Um, I'd kind of done the rat race for a number of years, uh, lived in the Bay, uh, and then moved here to kind of escape, kind of, the traditional idea of, of, of kind of workforce labor. Um, and I was working within advertising, uh, for a number of years, and when the economy crashed, I lost my job, along with fairly, the large majority of my generation. And so, after applying for about 191 jobs, most of which I was unqualified for, I mean, overqualified for, um, over a period of about six months, I decided to sell everything I owned, um, to make a film in Africa, uh, part of a film in Southeast Asia, and then pursue a career in art. A career in art, generally, um, those two don't go together, especially with the American concept of the way art works and the way patronage works. But we decided that we would take some time to try to influence and create, um, both a patronage model, but also try to create, um, a group of people where we take the resources we have together and share them with each other, so we can do more incredible things. And that's by extension, is what has happened at The Generator. Uh, we were able to, after our, we kind of pulled a coup in 2012, and made a really incredible art project, uh, at Burning Man. And that got the attention of some very wealthy, powerful individuals who decided that they wanted to fund us. And what that funding entailed was basically $330,000 a year to run a creative space, uh, a creative space which we call The Generator. The Generator is founded upon, uh, some basic principles. It's open, inclusive, and fully decommodified. Uh, it's open in that everyone's welcome to come, which is everyone here, and you're welcome to come and do whatever you like creatively or industrially in the space. With that, we ask that everyone is open to including everyone else in the process, and then we ask that you don't buy or sell anything within the space. That does not extend to outside of the space. This is a space whose idea, whose concept is, it is to take the act of rapid prototyping, the act of creating, the act of inventing, and allow regular people access to industrial tools and resources and skilled people to make whatever they envision. So, whether it's a new widget, whether it's an enormous art project, whether it's building a barn for their property, whether it's improving their vehicle, or whether it's changing the way we work in our everyday life and inventing new answers to existing problems, that's what we encourage. The way we do that is, we secured a 34,000-square-foot warehouse in Sparks, Nevada, and all of the equipment for which you'd want to build with. We have a full wood shop, a full metal shop, a full tech lab, sewing room, uh, a stage. We have a four-foot-by-three-foot laser cutter, we have a full CNC, uh, 3D printers, uh, pretty much everything you need to make industrial art and rapid prototyping is all in one building. There is no charge, there's no fee, the entire operation is run through donations. Um, as I said, we have one large donor who provides the salary of myself and our other two employees, and kind of general, general costs for on the building. But everything else, every single tool, the quarter-million dollars worth of tools we've had donated over the last nine months, have all been donated by people I know in this room, friends of the community, people from around the nation who want to see an entire generation, an entire group of people succeed, and not only succeed, but really, really excel. We're, we're taking, and we're kind of democratizing the creative process. The idea that you need a lot of money or a lot of resources to make what you envision in your world, we are taking that and putting that away. Right now, in the City of Reno and Sparks, all of us have the ability to invent, to create, and build regardless of your place in life, your political position, your race, your creed, your ethos. So, come to The Generator, make cool stuff with us. This is also gr, part of a greater idea. And this is, you know, the political side of this, is we're trying to re-envision the way economies work. And as opposed to looking at the ideas of capitalism or socialism, and looking at them as albatrosses that we, we form kind of a, um, an ideological opposition or support for, we want to take pieces from a number of economic models and political models and mesh them together and see how they work in an open, actual functioning environment. And then we want to share the efficiencies of capitalism and some of the beautiful social support that comes from socialism. And then we just want to get some people together who, who want to build amazing things and share it with our cities. Um, in time, we're working on a phase-two of The Generator, and that is to try to install and establish Reno as an arts, creative, and technology-based city. I, I think that technology and creativity tie hand in hand. The artist needs the engineer as a muse, and the engineer needs the artist as a muse. And if we can do things, um, that, that are incredible, that are compelling, we will attract the smart minds who are coming through this city every year for a silly festival in the middle of nowhere to stay here. And if we can maybe model ourselves a bit more off of Austin and make this a city that people of my generation choose to stay in, instead of struggling in for five years and not quite having a job and leaving, then I think we have a lot of hope in this city. So, thank you for your time, and, uh, like I said, come by. It's for everyone, like, literally, right if you want to repair a vehicle, if you, if either of you, any of you want to build anything, if anyone here just wants to come and hang out at our potlucks and eat some food that some friends made, go for it. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Hey, don't you, don't you want to run for office?
Uh, maybe in my 50s, possibly. I don't know how, I, I was with Syncat for two and a half years, so I'm very intimately familiar with how this works.
Yeah. Are you having an event this weekend?
Uh, we are having a fundraiser. We're calling it Burn It or Buy It, which is a fundraiser for, um, our art project Embrace. We're building two seven-story people buildings, um, which is a $265,000 project we have to raise every single penny for. Um, long story short, it's two 70-foot-tall people in a basic embrace, which is actually inside a five-story building in each, in which we're putting people 52 feet up in the air inside of two giant heads to look back at each other and kind of think about the nature of the relationships in your lives and appreciate those people who have passed, um, and try to think about them in a positive way. So, we're holding a fundraiser this weekend. It's called Buy It or Burn It. It's an art auction where, uh, we are taking a number of reputable pieces of art and a number of not-so-reputable pieces of art, and we are offering people the chance to choose to buy it or the chance to burn it. So, and in the meantime, we're gonna have, um, some entertainment, um, a chance for everyone to walk around, see the space, uh, talk, collaborate, make new friends, and, uh, maybe make some new social connections, too.
What, what day is that? Saturday?
Uh, Saturday the 15th. It starts at about 7:00 at The Generator.
Seven at night?
Seven at night. Yep. Yep, we are, we're mostly artists, and so at the end of the day, we do almost everything in the middle of the night when no one's awake, so...
Nocturnal.
Yeah. And come by. I mean, we're, we're building incredible things. It's in our backyard. Um, this is, we want this to be a point of pride for all of us. Um, I look at Northern Nevada as a very special place. There's a reason why I live here, and there's a reason why I think a lot of us are collecting and coming here. And if we can do some very basic things, I think we can get a number of, of industrious creative people to come here. And instead of making, you know, right now, there's an exodus from San Francisco to Oakland. I think if we can do some basic things, like find a way to make some live work within some warehouses, we can take a huge amount of... some warehouses, we can take a huge amount of very creative, industrious people and get them to just go an extra three hours over here, and we can really build economies internally in our own city. And it'll be slow. I don't promise any kind of major economic revitalization in a day, but if you come out to our little warehouse, we've shifted, we've shifted one of the areas in Sparks that has been known for some strange activity to a place where there's, the only strange activity is big giant heads being built. So,
Last night, we had the pleasure of hearing you speak at the Technology and Innovation Council, and it was impressive. So our next, our next meeting, we will have a field trip to The Generator, so I encourage all of you guys to come with us and experience this. And I think it's people like you that truly change it. It reminds me so much of when we started Midtown. It really was so much of the artists and the people that had the vision and the creativity, and it does move the needle on economic development. It's a huge impact in our city. So if people think the arts don't matter, they really, really do. And like I said, I commend you. That is so impressive, and this is like a little, you know, diamond in the rough that we, you know, need to now come out and promote and, you know.
There's a lot of diamonds in this city. If you look at what the Holland Project has been doing on their own for three-plus years now, all by themselves, you look at what Reno Artworks has been doing, if you look at what Bridgewater's been doing, you look at what the bike project's been doing, you look at what the Food Co-op's been doing, or the Reno Collective, we have a number of collective coworking spaces who are taking advantage of the ways in which we can integrate technology and leverage our resources using the internet, using the affordability of technology and tools. There are amazing tools now that formerly were in the hundreds of thousands-dollar range that are less than $10,000 that allow all of us to be stunningly industrious. And so I think you're looking at a generation of people who watched the economy absolutely fall out from under their feet, and the idea of the American dream was kind of taken away from us. And so you're watching a generation of us who are redefining it, and we've never been lazy. I think the thing is, we always looked around and said, "How can we make this world what we want to make it?" And I think now you're looking at a generation who is doing exactly that. And part of that is through collaboration, and a huge part of that's through coworking and sharing ideas and knowledge and just making cool things. So, yeah, thank you.
Good job.
Great, thanks.
Yeah.
Moving on to D2. Dr. Mulvaney?
Good afternoon, members of the council. For the record, my name is Steve Mulvaney. I am one of the former presidents of Truckee Meadows Tomorrow Board of Directors, and sharing the podium with me this afternoon, not on your agenda however, is...
I'm Amy Cummings, and I'm one of the current board members of Truckee Meadows Tomorrow and the current vice president.
So it ought to be obvious, looking, or maybe it isn't, looking at the two of us, you have the old and past and increasingly decrepit part of the organization here, and you've got the new, young, vital, and future face of the organization in terms of Amy. It's our pleasure to be here today, and that's basically the way we're going to try to divide this presentation. We want to, I want to kind of take a look back and talk to you about how we got here, and Amy's going to bring you up to speed on kind of where we are and how we move forward. And there's supposed to be a PowerPoint going, is that... We're working on that, are we? While she's doing that, let me just make a couple of brief introductory comments about really why we're here, and it's not part of what is on any of the slides. I think there are three takeaways that we'd like you to have from today's presentation. One is to let you know that Truckee Meadows Tomorrow is really very much alive and well after a brief two-year hiatus. We want to give you a much clearer, better understanding of kind of who we are and what we do and why we do it. And third, and I think maybe most importantly, I think we have a lot in common, Reno City Council, the city of Reno, and Truckee Meadows Tomorrow. I looked at your strategic plan this morning, and I think I counted in there about 12 times that the phrase "quality of life" appears. And that's what we're all about, is defining that and helping to measure it. Let me start with kind of who TMT is. We're a membership-driven, local 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We have a 15-member governing board. Several of them are here today, and if you're a TMT board member or whatnot, if you just wave or smile or stand or somehow acknowledge yourselves. We currently have 72 paid members from all kinds of different categories. In the business category, we have AT&amp;T, Envy Energy, Wells Fargo as members, from the area of government, EDON, Tamwa, the Regional Planning Association, Reno Housing Authority. We have education members. We've got folks from the nonprofit like the Children's Cabinet, Community Health Alliance, Girl Scouts, Keep Truckee Meadows Beautiful, the Pioneer Center, United Way, Veterans Guest House. We're a broad and fairly diverse organization. To give you an idea about what TMT does, I'm not going to read that slide to you. You can take a look at it yourself. But essentially, what we do is a five-step process of helping the community to define, identify, measure, and chart the progress of various quality-of-life indicators. And I think the key element might be the first one, and that is that what we have put on our website as the most important factors defining quality of life weren't derived by us. We didn't make them up. There's been a long, involved, community engagement process where the community has told Truckee Meadows Tomorrow what's important to them. And so they have helped frame and define what those quality-of-life indicators are. We've gathered the data and helped measure them. Now, the next obvious question at this point might be, how the heck did we get into this business, and why would anybody want to be in the business of collecting and analyzing data on quality of life? This was a fairly convoluted process. Let me see if I could make some short sense out of it. In the 1980s, those of us that were here then remember that rapid period of growth. Housing was going crazy, and everybody was starting to wonder how it was that that high-growth area was beginning to impact quality of life. EDON, the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency, the Washoe Education Association, which is the teachers' union, and Washoe Med, got together in '92 to try to help EDON define what quality of life was, because they kept saying, businesses that want to relocate here keep talking about quality of life, but it was almost impossible to really identify what quality of life meant, you know, to define it, let alone figure out indicators that we're going to use to measure it. So when the legislature mandated regional planning in '89, the short version of the story is that there was a Quality of Life Task Force that was started as advisory to the Regional Planning Agency. We became an offshoot of that, and then in 1993, really became our own, we spun ourselves off to get more independence and became our own nonprofit. So what the heck are community of life, quality of life indicators anyway? These are measures across the community that folks have told us, answer the question, what matters most to your quality of life living here in the Truckee Meadows? And the indicators that we have identified, or that the community has helped us identify, that we have on our website, have to be measurable, they have to be actionable, and they have to be important. So they're things that residents have told us impact how they live, where they live, how they learn, how they go about enriching their lives, raising their families. That's what we're in the business of doing. At the moment, we have 33 quality-of-life indicators scattered across 10 different categories. When we began this process and first started gathering that kind of data in '93, '94, we had 66. And the Cotton Pickin' report that we issued that year was about an inch thick. It was boring. It was dull. It was too academic. I didn't even read the whole thing. And we quickly said, "Look, not all 66 of these indicators are of equal importance." So we went back and did another community engagement process and said, "Look, help us sift and sort through these so that we're really dealing with the stuff that matters." And we've now got 33 spread across those 10 indicators. And each one of those indicators, by the way, has in essence an aspirational vision statement where the community has helped us set out, what are we shooting for? What do we, what do we want to see in terms of education and lifelong learning or natural environment? What's the goal we're trying to get to? So that's where we are up to this point. Amy's going to take it from this point on.
Thank you very much. Again, Amy Cummings, board member with Truckee Meadows Tomorrow. And we have just had our 20th anniversary celebration and publication of the annual report. So that's the memo that you see here. We've gone down to a more streamlined two-to-three-page report that gives you at a glance an indicator of whether each of these measures is going up, going down, staying about the same, so that people can really track this over time. And that's what makes the data so unique, is that we do have this history of data that we can pull from, from the last 20 years, and also the breadth of the data. So you saw on the list, it's everything from the arts to health, education, and transportation, and the full range of issues that contribute to our quality of life. And all of this information is on the TMT website. So if you go to truckiemeadesomorrow.org, you can download all of the charts and tables that give you this information, and it's available to the public. We feel this is very relevant to nonprofits and government agencies and the city of Reno for many reasons, because as you know, so much of what is done today has to be performance-driven. So you really, it's important to be able to track changes over time in all of these indicator areas, and it varies depending on the nature of the organization, of course. But I know this information is also very helpful for grant writing. If you're looking for, just at a glance, what is the median house price doing, what is the poverty rate, it's here on this website and is easily accessible. In terms of the funding, we were started, as we discussed earlier, through a grant from Washoe Medical. And in TMT's early days, they funded other nonprofits, so we're actually issuing grants. Today, what's left of that original funding is now covering the day-to-day operations of gathering this data and maintaining the website. We have memberships, indicator sponsorships, and that's the way the revenues are primarily generated today. And we mentioned that during the recession, of course, donations were very hard-hit. TMT went somewhat into hibernation for a period of time to reassess and reevaluate. And it was actually during that sort of hibernation period that memberships started to increase, and we started to hear from people that this was really something that had a lot of value to the community. So we were newly inspired to continue things. One of our sponsors is the city of Reno, and we wanted to take a minute to thank the city for sponsoring the government engagement, citizen engagement indicator, and of course, hope that the city might be interested in sponsoring an indicator in the future. One of the reasons that this is so, again, so relevant is that it does assist with performance measurement. It has many things in common with the Smarter Region Initiative, in that it collects this regional data over a broad spectrum of issues. So it's available for economic development, research, and other initiatives. So it's something that's out there in the hopes of boosting our community. We are also a nationally recognized organization. The Community Indicators Consortium is a national organization. TMT has been active in their board and has received multiple awards for being on the leading edge of measuring community indicators. So with that, we welcome any questions that you may have, and thank you again so much for your time to share information about TMT.
Thank you very much. Thanks for everything y'all do. We appreciate it very, very much. It helps our community make it a better place to live. Any questions, anything?
Well, just a comment. We had our strategic workshop earlier this month, and we talked about taking our strategic plan and making a more concerted effort to make that a comp plan. Our current master plan, which would be a component, is the work on that, deciding what our community values are and what policies should come from those, was done in the late 80s, early 90s. And so I think when staff showed us that proposal, the first phase was a lot of data collection, and I think the data that comes in, the longitudinal data on the, you know, the indicators, will be really important to inform that process. So it's a good service that you provide, and I think you did capture that in your one slide, Amy. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much. The final message I was, use our data. It's there on the website. I mean, there's no sense in recreating the wheel. If I were a Reno staff member, I think I'd bookmark that website and go to it frequently. It's there for the taking. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Now we go to... F1. Now we'll go to... Which one? Excuse me. L7 and L8. Got them. L7. Mr. Delgado.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for taking mine up a bit earlier, as I may have to leave prior to the ending of council. L7 was a request for staff to work with Nevada Office of Veterans of Services. They reached out. They wanted to do some community service with us, and so in hopes that we can, what we're thinking about is possibly doing a community cleanup. Earlier this morning, Lisa Mann along with Joe Henry went out and did a kind of a window survey of some areas that may, that could possibly benefit from this. An area that we're looking at is just north, just south of Paradise Park and the Ninth and Signet area, kind of in the realm of the drive-in theater, so to say. So the thing with that area, though, is it borders right next to Sparks. So we're thinking that there's an opportunity not only just to work with the VA, but also with the city of Sparks and their code enforcement in that neighborhood there to do a community cleanup. I was looking to give staff an opportunity to work on that. We're looking at the day being March 22nd or March 29th, and if you guys can give me the okay, I think that'd be a great opportunity for us to work with, along with them.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. That's covered. Item L8.
L8. In line with the Nevada Office of Veterans of Services, also a regional partnership with the county and the city of Sparks and the state of Nevada, they're, Caleb Cage, the, I believe, the director of that office is trying to get started as the Green Zone Initiative, which is basically a hub of information for veterans. So we all know there's a lot of overlapping with a lot of different services around town that people just don't know exist, or people are fighting over grants, and you know, that goes with a lot of nonprofits. There's an opportunity for a hub of information for us to work in a regional capacity, seeing if we can direct staff to jump on board with that.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Where are we now? Item F1? Yep, we're item F1.
And...
Yes?
F1 is bill number...
Wait a minute.
6885.
Wait a minute. Let me ask a question here. Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. For the record, proper notice was given and no correspondence was received.
Now your own.
Okay, thank you. Bill number 6885, ordinance demanding the Reno Municipal Code Title 18, Annexation and Land Development, Chapter 18.08, Zoning, Section 18.08.101, entitled Establishment and Purpose of Base and Overlay Zoning Districts, Section 18.08.201, entitled Permitted Uses by Base Zone Districts, Section 18.08.301, entitled Non-Residential and Mixed-Use Based Zoning Districts, and Section 18.08.405, entitled Regional Center and Transit Quarter Overlay Districts, together with other matters properly relating thereto.
Mr. Crater, you wish to speak? I guess, Mr. Crater, do you wish to speak, or do you want to just let us go ahead and act?
I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you. For the record, my name is Ken Crater, and regarding the TODD standards, there's been a lot of work put into this, and in general, I think staff has done a great job of moving this forward through And in general, I think staff has done a great job of moving this forward through countless planning commission meetings. But there's still a couple of changes that I think would be of a huge benefit to the city of Reno. One of those is that the last round of amendments is, there was discussion about allowing parking in front of industrial buildings and the secondary TOD corridors, and that is now included in the language. But I think we also need to look at public facilities. And an example there is, the city obviously would like to build a new police station someday, and there's been a lot of work put into that effort. And there's a good chance that a new police station could end up in one of the TOD corridors. Well, a police station has much different requirements than a typical retail or office or residential building, and that relates to security. And all of the options that I've looked at as far as potential police site show the need for a public parking facility in front of the building, along with a separation to provide for security for the folks inside that building. So I think it would make sense to also include public facilities as a facility that could be built in the TOD corridor and allow parking in front of the building. Also, there's been a lot of discussion about parking in front of buildings, period. And I see the need to not have parking in front of buildings that are truly in an urban-type corridor, such as downtown Reno. But when we're talking way south on Virginia Street or North Virginia Street or 4th Street, to me, our focus should be on good architecture and good landscaping, and let the developer figure out the best way to lay out the site. And if he thinks it makes sense to have parking in front of the building and a secondary corridor in these areas, then I think that makes sense. Again, we're trying to encourage development in the city of Reno, and I feel that that would encourage that type of development. And the last thing I have is, up until just the very last go-round, we had a provision within the standards. It said if you don't meet the building orientation or land use intensities, that you could apply for a site plan review and do special things like more landscaping, pedestrian enhancements. And that has now gone back to a special use permit. And I'm pretty sure that the council, when they directed staff to look at these TODs, the idea was to simplify, streamline, and again, encourage development. So I would like to see that go back to a site plan review in lieu of a special use permit. Again, all things that I think will promote, encourage development in the Reno area of quality development. And again, let's focus on good projects, good architecture, and good landscaping. But if we can simplify the development review process, I think that's a good thing. And that's my comments, and I appreciate the chance to speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Angela Fuas? Puse, I mean. Always butchered, Angela.
Quite right. Thank you. For the record, Angela Fuas, just wanted to echo a lot of the comments that Ken brought up. The staff has been great, specifically Claudia, in working through this process and working with folks both from the development field, the planning field, and the government sector. There's a lot of us that kind of butted heads on some major issues, and I think we all agree to disagree. And the end result is that we have some really good policy changes, but we also have some things that I think maybe we can improve on. Last December, Ms. Zadra brought up a question when you guys were looking at the master plan related to TOD, and she said, "Are there policies and standards in this new TOD zoning code that make it easier for development?" Yes, there are, but there's also some major areas that I think are going to make it more difficult to develop within the TOD. Ken brought one up, and that is, it used to be if you did not meet certain standards related to building orientation and to parking in front of the building versus in back of the building, you could do a special use permit. Some of those have been changed in certain areas, specifically on South Virginia and 4th Streets. That's no longer allowed at all. If you want to deviate from that, you have to do a variance. It's very difficult to get an approval for a variance because you have to prove there's a hardship. So that, I think, is one area that you want to talk about amending. Another area is related to the South Virginia corridor, not adjacent to South Virginia, not Midtown, not Downtown, not way down south. But there's a maximum density, and that's a new standard. Looking back, I can't remember why we put in a maximum density. I think, again, we are trying to promote density on South Virginia, so maybe we should delete that standard. It's a maximum density of 30 units to the acre, so something you may want to consider. Thank you.
Have a note of the public comment, bring it back to the table.
I'd like to... You know, I read the planning commission minutes. I participated in some of the early meetings. You know, the planning commission, I think, heard what Mr. Crater and Ms. Fuas were saying and took it into consideration, but went forward with how the ordinance is now. And I don't know, I mean, I'd like to maybe hear from staff on this, maybe even if staff feels we need time to, you know, maybe brief this issue for us, because it does seem to be differences of thought and opinion. And then also, I met with staff earlier in the week and brought up a couple of questions about some things that I had identified. I don't know, Ms. Hanson, did Mr. Turney or bring those to your attention?
He did, but he said you would bring them up, so I don't have...
Okay, okay. Is there an easy response to their, you know, specific questions?
Claudia Hanson, Planning and Engineering Manager. It's the first I've heard of these since the planning commission, so I'm just kind of taking it in as you are right now. As you said, I would say most of this was discussed by the planning commission, and there are a number of people who had differing opinions who aren't here today. So the building orientation, I think they allowed more flexibility in the areas that they felt comfortable, the secondary corridors. There was a long discussion regarding the special use permits versus the site plan review. And I believe planning commission, to summarize their comments, they were comfortable with the process of the site plan review, but the findings of the site plan review are drastically different from the special use permit, and it's really not project-oriented or site-oriented. So they would be more comfortable with the site plan review if the findings were changed, which wasn't what we were working on at that time. So those findings are very different between those two. So they were not comfortable going the site plan review route.
And so that is the...
And then the...
Yeah, the other one was the building, the parking?
Adding public facilities. They were comfortable. We did put in that, the allowance for parking in front of buildings in industrial developments, certain portion of the parking, and they were comfortable with that. And there was discussion about allowing it elsewhere, and they felt that they should see those on a case-by-case basis. Extending parking in any area in front of the building anywhere, it shouldn't be a TOD then, if you're going to go that route. That's if you're not doing any of the stand... And maybe that's where we want to go long-term, and I believe the regional planning is going to look at that the next update. But I think if you get rid of parking and building orientation, it's not a TOD anymore. It needs to... We need to rethink it on a bigger picture of whether it should be in the TOD at all. So that would be my comments on that. And then, no building orientation requirements, same thing. Planning commission discussed relaxing the building orientation more, and they were not comfortable with that, and they felt it should be on a case-by-case basis.
And a case-by-case basis would be then a discretionary process?
A special use permit, in most cases, yes.
Okay, okay. And then, I brought up Section 18.08.301, land use intensities, and this is where it seems to be that, it seems hard to read that section. And basically, I guess what I'm seeing is this new concept being introduced is, if a development contains more than one story and a mix of land uses, we're not going to go with any FAR density at all. So, you know, a lot of times, the code is written to contemplate new development, but most development that occurs is on sites that already have some level of development, and that's where things get real tricky. And so this 18.08.301E, it just says, basically, it, you know, it gets into, it's kind of, is it meant to be a little bit of a relief?
It is. If you're doing, there's been a number of discussions, especially with regional planning, that we're not seeing the mix of uses that we would like to see in these areas. So we get a lot of just commercial or just residential development, and we're looking for more of that traditional mixed-use development that came out of our best practices study that we did a few years ago and through many studies. And this actually came through with some discussions with regional and with RTC as well, to have some other encouragement to get those mix of uses in one project, whether it's vertical or horizontal, that doesn't matter. But if you could build a truly mixed-use project and meet building orientation, that's the end goal, and then you can work on phasing and intensification in later time.
And I guess my most substantial questions were related to West Reno, because we're opening up a new, we're creating kind of a new planning zoning area out there. And it maybe encompasses like 10 properties on either side of I-80 in the West Gate Regional Center. And gaming is allowed over there. Ours are truck plazas and truck terminals, is that?
Yes, with a special use permit.
Those uses require in and of themselves a special use permit?
Yes, the truck stop.
Okay. Because that was, and there was a definitional problem. Did Mr. Turney or bring that to your attention, that there was something called a truck-trailer that wasn't a defined term?
The use... Oh, in, from the land use table?
Yeah.
No, he didn't mention that one. But if we can go back and add that definition in.
Yeah, I think there was an error. But I guess my question out there is, out there, we are abutting to the state line. And would special use permits be required for residential adjacency if a development comes in against California land that is, and it might be Forest Service out there or public lands, but that has a, you know, I don't even know what county we're out there, Sierra County or whatever. Because I am increasingly concerned about the mixed land use and jurisdictions out in that part of the West Reno.
Right, yeah. The special use permit would still require for residential adjacency, just like we do adjacent to Sparks.
Okay.
Yeah, we would look across the jurisdictional boundary.
Well, you know, I'm prepared to go ahead and motion to move this forward if the rest of council is... I want to...
I have a quick, a couple of quick changes that I would like to, in that area specifically.
Yeah.
If I could get the overhead, please. The Stremmels came to the planning commission meeting at the last planning commission meeting, which is going to be doing the map amendment. So you've already done, you've already approved the master plan map portion of this. And this is the text portion of it, so the standards. The map you'll be seeing on the 26th, I believe. And then the Stremmels came, the Stremmels who owned most of the Gold Ranch area, came to the planning commission meeting for the map amendment. There was some confusion about the uses and the map changes. Their comments really were geared more towards this amendment rather than the map amendment that was at planning commission two weeks ago. So I met with them after the meeting, and they, right now, their properties are zoned, HC Hotel Casino and CC Community Commercial. Switching to the Western Gateway Regional Center, some uses didn't cleanly switch over. So, meeting with them, they've asked that these uses come in, and I can read them in, to add car washes and convenience stores as an allowed use and for, with a special use permit, auto repair garage, automobile and truck sales, drive-through facilities, outdoor storage, rental store with outdoor storage. As accessory uses, copy centers, drive-through facilities, general personal service, and laundry self-service. And as temporary uses, temporary entertainment events and temporary stockpiling. Temporary stockpiling is what's being done out there right now on the other side of the freeway, which is limited to 24 months for the temporary stockpile, and that's fairly restricted elsewhere in Title 18. So they've asked that these uses be added into the Western Gateway Regional Center land use table.
Ms. Edra. Ms. Edra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is something that I asked for quite some time ago, so I still have some interest in it. And in particular, the comments that we heard. I mean, Claudia, I know that you've held multiple public meetings and gotten input, but I'm wondering if there still isn't a way for us to address the orientation and parking so that we are satisfying the needs. The reason why I asked for this revisit in the first place was, as Angela described, we need to work with those who have the wherewithal, particularly in these economic times, to bring something to us, work with them as opposed to against them. I'm wondering, was it ever considered size of project for different standards?
There were lengthy discussions at all.
And how was that, give us the process and the discussion points that you had.
They were, they were very focused on keeping it at, finally, at planning commission. The planning commissioners were at the workshops and all of the public hearings. To the larger industrial projects, they were, they could understand that, and they were fine with that. Everything else, they really wanted to see on a case-by-case.
Just a follow-up. When you're saying on a case-by-case, is it by variance or by special use permit?
Special use permit.
So, yeah, we're getting, I'm getting a no from the audience. That's just where I was checking.
Yeah. And can I put something on the overhead? So this policy is the one that I'm looking at right here. And this is basically, it's in the code right now that says, anywhere in the TOD, if you deviate from land use intensity, meaning this floor area ratio or density or building orientation, you can do that through a special use permit process. So that's currently today, correct?
Yes.
And what's being proposed with this change is that in all of the TODs, except for East 4th Street and the north section of the South Virginia TOD, which is basically between the convention center and Midtown, that does not apply. So you would trigger a variance, not a special use permit, if you wanted to deviate from building orientation or density.
So based on that, how do we correct that?
That was, okay, that did have lengthy discussion, and I apologize, I was talking about a different section. So there was lengthy discussion that they were, that they felt the two areas that really needed to be protected and maintained and continued the development pattern were East 4th Street and the northern portion of South Virginia Street. They felt East 4th Street was the existing building character landscape there. Most of the buildings are up front, and they felt very adamant about keeping that the way it is on East 4th Street. And the same on the northern portion of South Virginia Street, so down to Moana, that they felt that was very important, that's very centrally located, it has the higher, highest transit ridership, and they already, there's already so many buildings meeting that they wanted to continue that in that area. That's the planning commission's comments.
Claudia, you hit on the topics that were the specific trigger points that I identified when asking for this. And it really is the concern that we had, everyone needed to come in either for a special use permit or a variance, that we needed to specifically look at that. And to, the FAR was also, the floor-to-area ratio was one of them, as well as parking. Those were the issues that I identified. I'm just, I'm thinking that maybe what we did is, we didn't have enough conversation from this council and share our intent and our vision with the planning commission. The planning commission has been working with this for quite a while, and you have with the public, but I think we've missed the very essence of what the intent initially was. I'm not sure that we've brought the solutions that were anticipated. I think we need more work. I think maybe we need to have a joint meeting with the planning commission.
But I think if we see changes we need to make in this, I think we can make them now.
Can we?
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think that we maybe are not of one mind, or have really, you know, comprehensively discussed that intent. And so I think, prior to jumping to a joint meeting on two issues in two parts of town, let's send staff back to brief this issue. And for me, and we have new folks on who have not been involved in these design issues to the length that other folks have, brief it with some design examples, and we'd ask Mr. Crater and Ms. Fuas to brief it with some design standards, some illustrations, also to show us what you're talking about on the ground, what they're trying to preserve, and what you're saying is preventing a, you know, a design that is in demand in the market, that the market wants. And I'm open on either one, and I think that would be a very good learning and instructive experience for us, and we could put it out maybe two meetings. And so, you know, that was what I would suggest. I'd like to also say, I think we need to take control of our code in many ways and what we want, rather than regional. And I sit on regional, and I'm trying to get a handle of how much they direct us and where that line falls. And the final comment is, I'm a little concerned about outdoor storage and that Western Gateway. That is our Western Gateway, and outdoor storage is a real tough use. So if we do hold on this a little bit, I'd like some discussion with staff to show us what we could be in store for on outdoor storage and that, allowing that as a use on that part of town.
To answer the earlier question, if you do have changes you want to make, you can make those today. I never got a chance to answer that question.
Ms. Sheeby?
Yeah. I just want to really make sure that Angela and Ken, you guys really voiced your opinion, because you guys... your opinion, because you guys understand this very, very well. And I've had a lot of developers and people come to me, and, and really, this is a very big issue for them. So it, it's really important that we hear from you guys and, and to really speak up because this is essential and really, this needs to happen. I think this has been on, been going on for a long time, and I just think at this point we need to move forward and make it much easier for people to be able to develop in these areas. Otherwise, I mean, I think this is ridiculous. I mean, we got to do it now and get it moving.
And I, I think my question for Angela and Ken is, if you guys have brought any suggested language changes to this.
Take your shot while you can.
Right, and where should we start? No, just kidding. So what, again, for the record, Angela, through this, maybe what I would suggest on this specific standard is that we add in within all of the TODs. So it does not exclude East Fourth Street and does not exclude the South Virginia portion of the TOD. But again, what this says is, if you want to deviate from having your floor area ratio or your density or building orientation, you still trigger a special use permit. So if this council wants to make development more streamlined, I think you need to relook at that, because that's, that's what's in the code right now. And so this really is not changing much about what's in the code today. So I don't think your development community is going to say, oh, it's so much better on that specific policy. One thing that, that Ken brought up is, what if we change it from a special use permit to a site plan review? So a special use permit triggers a public hearing to Planning Commission. A site plan review is at the staff level, but you still submit all your plans, it still goes out, it's still noticed, so all the neighbors would know about it, but it would be up to staff to make that determination. It can be appealed, and when it's appealed, it would go to city council. And I think the Planning Commission had concerns with a site plan review versus a special use permit because it would jump over them. And, and the findings as well. There's different findings for a site plan review versus a special use permit.
I have a quick question with regard, with regards to the comparisons of a site plan review and a special use permit. From a developer's standpoint, what's the cost difference?
The site planner, currently the site planner view is roughly 3,000, special use permit is roughly 5,000. With the fee study that's going through the Building Enterprise Committee right now, we're recommending the special use permit be lowered to about the same as the site planner view.
And I can answer that from a developer's standpoint, Eli. There's no difference in cost as far as what it takes to prepare the application. There's a nominal difference in the fee, the big issue is the time. And that a site plan review is basically a 30-day administrative process versus a special use permit that's too, more likely a three-month process to get through the Reno Planning Commission. And time is money, so.
I would be for cutting that time limit down, but I, I don't, personally don't support eliminating the Planning Commission. You can set timetables or something, but cutting down the process to where we just go to the, straight away, might as well do away with Planning Commission. And I'm not for that.
Mr. Mayor, I concur. I think they are our most important citizen-appointed body, they have statutory authority, and I think they add value for us. And so I think on, on something like this, in areas where we have defined community character policy objectives, I think the special use permit is okay. I'm glad we're talking about procedures, because that is the work we need to do on our code, more than anything, is we need, we can really help everyone's process, at the staff level, certainly the development community, the staff level, the Planning Commission, our agendas, if we focus on our procedures. So this is a good discussion.
I really think this, and I agree with Ms. Adger right now, that this needs to go back and come back to us with cleaning it up and doing what we've talked about. But I'm, I would say, two weeks? Go ahead, Ms. Dort.
I think if we're going to send it back, I think we need to send it back specifically saying what we want to see in it.
I, I don't disagree.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, if I might, just quickly, Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager for the record, what it appears you're really struggling with, which is typical, unfortunately, of the planning process, is trying to have a balance among many things. If you really said, because ultimately you're the decision-makers, if you said encouraging development in Todd corridors is the objective, then that leads in a certain direction. Kind of what you have now is, we want to encourage development, but we also want it to look like this. And so those are the conflicts. Because in order for it to look like this, and what you want it to look like, that's where you're having the rub with the development, because they'll come in and say, I can't do, or I won't do, I choose not to do what you're providing or suggesting I need to do. So, you know, anything in life, the clearer you are, the more chance of success. And everything you do is balanced, but what you have is the Planning Commission's best effort to balance the many things they heard and present to you something that, you know, took everything into consideration. And sometimes that just doesn't work if you have a specific objective. If your specific objective is to increase development along the Todd corridors, and that's really what you want to do, then I think that would lead you down a different path than would if your concern is, what are the buildings going to look like in certain areas of town?
I think you're 100% correct, but I think that my biggest hang-up with any of it, talking to developers and contractors, is the length of time and the expense it takes to get something to planning and then getting it out of planning. I want to see what it looks like in the corridors, and I want to know. But I, I have a problem just bypassing the Planning Commission altogether. But I think setting some time limits, telling them and making staff and everybody work together to get those time limits, taking six months, three months, four months, five, is ridiculous sometimes. And in these corridors, we've got to have, we've got to be able to move them, and we should bend over backwards to move them.
Yes, sir.
Again, Ken Crater, one thing that I would like to see directionalize to the Planning Commission is to avoid the need for a variance. I mean, that's one point that Angela's brought up. And everybody in the council is familiar with the findings that have to be made to approve a variance, and they're much more strict than what's required for a special use permit. So I would like to see direction to the Planning Commission to allow that special use process in lieu of any sort of variance, because that really ties the hands of developer. And I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, I'm fully supportive of bringing all my projects to the Planning Commission. I always have been and always will be.
Yep, thank you. Mr. Dort, then?
Well, I guess, I guess, really, it's just more of a discussion here. I mean, I mean, if we can fix it, I mean, I'm concerned about the variance process, that's the, the process that I'm most concerned about. If we, if we, if we fix that, is, is the rest of the issues you brought up solved? Are the rest?
As Councilwoman Zodra said, I would like to see a couple more fixes on the parking. And Claudia said, if we, you know, allow parking in front of buildings, there's no Todd. But the reality is, if you do a good project, a good design, have great pedestrian connections, great landscaping, a great building design, to me, it still fits well within the Todd. But to tell a developer-
But is that solved with the special use permit process?
As long as parking is one of those options that you're allowed to come forward with the special use permit process, yes. Right now, it's not.
But we could solve that, I mean, I mean, by including that in the special use permit process-
That'd be perfect.
We could solve that problem and the issue of the variance. And we've got the issues resolved today.
And Bill or Claudia, does, is, I saw nods, but I want to hear, would that work for you?
Yes.
So the question then is, do we need to, do you need to draft it and bring it back to us, or can we approve it today with the first reading and bring it back in the second reading?
If we could take a recess, maybe do another item, and we'll get it written up and come back to it?
Yeah.
We're designing this camel, we're designing this camel back committee in an open session.
Yeah, there's really just a, I think, a few items.
But it's just a little tweaks, I think, though, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I, I think we can get there.
Well, then y'all, we'll, we will-
Continue this item and move on to the next one, come back to this one?
Yes, we will postpone this item. And if somebody got something you want to go talk to them about, get up and go talk to them.
I think those are the only issues, right, from, from the council?
Well, I have an issue about open storage, and I was, wanted to know about that.
And public facility was-
Open storage?
Are you talking about mini or?
No, it'd be open storage, so a contractor, you know, yard could open up with storing whatever.
It's outdoor storage, and it would be with a special use permit.
With a special use permit. See, we're talking out of two sides of our mouth. On the one hand, we drop in all these uses and say we want special use permits, which is a protective thing, but it's also discretionary. On the other hand, we're saying we want to streamline things. And so, you know, I think we are not consistent with our approaches, and frankly, I feel like we're not really-
I think the challenge-
Well, just let me continue. I feel like the illustration of what the issue is, is not really being presented. I have a pretty good idea. I mean, do you know what we're talking about in terms of the building orientation and, and all the different permutations that could happen in this corridor we're talking about? You do.
And, and, and I think the challenge is, when you, when you talk about expediting, you can usually expedite by, by, by applying additional design standards. And, and, and solving the issue that way, so what we're actually is asking, being asked to do is reduce the design standards, and that's why I think you have to have that special use permit process, is, is, we're saying that ideally, a Todd would look a certain way, but if we're going to relax those standards, you can't do it and expedite the process. You're going to have to do it through a public hearing process. So you do it through the special use permit process.
Well, or you have standards that you're very comfortable with, and you know they are meeting the objectives you want, and they don't go into the special use permit process, because we've had controversial special use permits before our era, you know, coming up. Do we want to create a whole lot of more of those? And so, you know, I, these are tricky issues, and I think it's reflective of the piecemeal approach we've taken to the code.
I don't think that we've had a piecemeal issue.
I don't either.
I, I think that we're always looking for corrections that are appropriate as the times change, and that's really what this has been about. So I think that, and that's exactly why we have the SUP process-
Right.
-because there are certain conditions and projects that need to have special consideration, and that absolutely accommodates it. I do not think that that is of confusion or contrast by any means. So, Mr. Mayor, I, I absolutely agree, we should just continue this till later in our agenda, to give staff the time with our two developers that are here. You've heard our, our comments, and make those tweaks and bring them back to us in the next hour.
We'll see if they cover it.
Yeah, I think, I think it'd be easy to fix.
I think so.
Okay. So we're going to delay hearing this for a couple, about an hour or so, or 30, 40 minutes till they figure it out. Now we're going to go to item number F2, Extension of Open Parking Lot.
Mr. Mayor?
Then we'll let you go. Yes, sir.
Ask if all the notice-
Oh, have all the notices been sent? Oh, you got me that time, Mr. Mayor.
We're trading.
Yeah, all right, that's the way we're going to play today. Have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. For the record, all the notices have been sent and no correspondence was received.
Now it's your turn, sir.
Thank you. Bill number 6886, ordinance amending the Reno Municipal Code Title 18 Annexation and Land Development, Chapter 18.08, Zoning Section 18.08202 entitled, Additional Regulations for Principal Uses to Allow for a Change to the Length of Time That May Be Granted for a Time Extension for Open Lot Parking in the Downtown Reno Regional Center and the Redevelopment Districts Together with Other Matters of Property Relating There Too.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Once again, Claudia Hansen, Planning and Engineering Manager. This was initiated, initiated to address the time limit for open lot parking lots in the downtown. The only official one that we're tracking time on is the Washoe County Courthouse. But there's another one coming in, which is the one in front of the new hub over on the Riverside. They just put in some pavers over there, and that's, that's, they're coming in shortly. And so the timeline will affect them and any new ones that come in. Currently, an open, a temporary open lot parking can come into the downtown for a maximum of three years, and then it needs to come to city council annually for renewals. Planning Commission heard this twice, they had lengthy discussions and asked for a number of revisions on it. We brought forward the idea of allowing open lot parking permanently if they bring in all the landscape improvements, and Planning Commission's discussion was that they did not feel that open lot parking was a long-term beneficial land use in the downtown specifically. So they felt that it should stay as a temporary use only. And that was a very lengthy conversation. So they did change this, that the, a temporary parking lot could come in under the same reduced standard, so no interior landscaping, just the street trees, and then appropriate drainage and paving, for a maximum of five years administratively. And then after the five years, they would be able to come back to city council and get another five-year extension on that for a total of 10 years.
So the counties, we're okay with the county?
The county right now is at three or four years, so this would extend them to five. And so in two more years, they would come to council for another five-year extension if they chose to do that.
Okay.
So that would give them a total of 10 years.
And if we have a temporary, what do they have to do for a temporary lot? They have to asphalt it or do stuff?
Yes, they would need to have an improved surface and curb gutter sidewalk and street trees, which would be the improvements that would have to come in with any development anyway. The idea was that we don't do the interior improvements and landscaping, because that's what's going to come out when you do a permanent project. But to get those street trees starting to grow and get the curb gutter and sidewalk completed in the downtown.
Okay, okay. Have a motion second, all in favor?
I have discussion. I supported this when it came forward, but essentially, we're changing the zoning ordinance for one parcel, and we may have ramifications for another parcel. How many hours have staff spent on this?
Fewer than 20.
More than 20?
I said fewer than 20.
Fewer than 20, okay. I mean, I guess, guess my point is, I think that this could have been affected by a different way. We have this special zoning district, the SPD, which we have kind of a lockbox around using, but this is a unique parcel. We could have maybe, if we had more refinement in our uses, I feel that we could use that zoning ordinance in, in different applications. And so, you know, once again, we're, we're spending time and rewriting the code for one property, and I think we're pulling away from what our objectives are. I mean, why do we not want temporary lots in downtown? What's the thinking?
Planning Commission's discussion was that that is not a long-term beneficial land use for downtown. They would like to see something more substantial, an actual vertical project come up rather than, than a parking lot, maybe even structured parking at that point, where you have, where you increase that, that density and intensity in the downtown.
But what about permanent parking lots?
They felt that parking lots in general should not be a long-term land use in the downtown.
And that, that is our policy basis, that parking lots are not something we want to see in downtown.
There's policy that says that it, parking should be structured.
Parking should be structured downtown. But the market wants surface lots. So, you know, why don't we do the work to think about allowing surface lots?
This is open lot parking. So this is a standalone parking lot. So they felt that surface parking would be fine if there was an associated structure with that.
The courthouse isn't the associated structure, or the Pioneer, or, you know, any of the other multiple users, the development that he has. I mean, why doesn't, why don't we really zone this public facility? Have we thought about doing that?
Well, I think, no, go ahead.
The, it's all located and within the Downtown Reno Regional Center, and so we would have to relook at the structure of the downtown regional center if we were going to isolate one little spot for public facilities.
I think having acres of parking lots, I know people like surface parking, but also having surface parking throughout our downtown core, I think would make it ugly as hell. And I think having these restrictions that we do are the right things to do, and we do have another one over there by the train trench, and we do have others that are coming. So I think having these rules, they got to put the landscaping and do stuff like that, I think is a step in the right direction. But we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Sir, you want to say something again? You know, you're pushing your luck today, but come on up.
I had filled out a form to speak, Ms. Taylor.
I know you did, and I'm sorry that I overlooked you.
No problem. For the record, my name is Ken Crater. And can I put some overheads up real quick on the display?
Sure, Ken, put it over there.
I don't believe that this ordinance just relates to one lot in downtown Reno. I think it relates to all the surface parking lots. And I've spent a lot of time thinking about this, and I agree that, you know, long-term, we all want to see development in the downtown area, but there's also a need for parking lots, especially, for example, with the ballpark, the special events that we have. So there's got to be a compromise. And I took some photos recently of the area around the ballpark where there's a lot of vacant property, open surface lots, and you can see here, y'all know what it looks like. You've been down there many, many times. And clearly, it's not the most lovely area in the world. In fact, when I was down taking this photo today, there was some gentlemen from out of town looking for the Auto Museum, asking for directions, and they're walking from the ballpark by, looking at the broken glass bottles and, and chain link fence. Then also, I took some photos recently of Rivercat Stadium in Sacramento of what the streets look like around their ballpark. It's a little different environment, but you can see, they've done a lot of work in providing street trees and landscaping around all their open and surface lot parking. And then also, the city of Sacramento does have permanent open lot parking, well-signed, landscaped, et cetera. landscaped, et cetera. So to me, I think it would make sense to allow for some type of more permanency for open lot parking because if somebody can make a buck doing something, a real building on their property, they're going to do it in a heartbeat. But wouldn't we rather have street trees and landscaping and lighting in these lots for now than what we have, which is bare asphalt and broken glass? So to me, what staff had brought forward to allow for that permanent open lot parking, let's encourage folks to landscape their parking lots and increase the beauty of our downtown area because the ballpark is, what an awesome facility. And then you go downtown and we have all the nice sidewalks and street trees and then there's those couple of blocks in between that are kind of scary. So I think there's a win-win here by allowing those street trees and permanents because eventually our economy is going to grow and there's going to be a higher and better use. And we're going to end up with building with garage parking. But to me, it makes a lot of sense to move in this direction. And that's my comments. Thank you.
I agree with you. One of the problems, you've got baseball, you've got about eight property owners. One person's leased it, but will the other eight property owners agree to do the landscaping and, or allow them to during their lease?
But I think if you allow that opportunity to do some inexpensive work, which is landscaping, lighting, knowing that they could have that for maybe 10 or 15 years until the economic opportunity comes up, they would versus right now where if they do anything, they're risking losing their grandfather's status. And that's why they leave these bare lots.
I think you're absolutely correct. All right. Motion? Second? All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item F3. Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Proper notice was given and no correspondence was received.
Which then brings us to bill number 6887, Ordinance Annexing to and Making Part of the City of Reno Certain Specifically Described Territory Being 5.435 Acres of Property Located on the North Side of Charlene Drive, 7975 Charlene Drive, 720 Feet West of Its Intersection with Military Road in the Special Planning Area Reno-Stad Joint Corridor Plan Medium Density Suburban Land Use Designation, Washoe County, Nevada Together with Other Matters Property Relating There Too.
All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ordinance adoption.
Which is ordinance number 6318, Ordinance Creating Chapter 2.17 of the Reno Municipal Code to be titled, Charter Committee of the City of Reno, Sections 2.17.010 to 2.17.020 of Chapter 2.17 of the Reno Municipal Code Establishing the Compensation for Members of the Charter Committee and Establishing the Duties of the City Clerk as the Official Record Keeper for the Charter Committee in Providing Other Matters Property Relating There Too.
Have a motion. Have a second. Have a second. All in favor?
I have a question on this, Mr. Mayor. I noticed underneath the title block of this ordinance, there's a sponsored by city attorney. I'm just curious, in our codification of ordinances or council rules on legislation, we don't really have a procedure or formality for who sponsors ordinances or resolutions. And so, you know, I don't think I've seen this before. And I'm just wondering what the thinking is of clearing out, of a declaration of who's the sponsoring entity of this ordinance.
Tracy J. Reno City Attorney's Office. The sponsor is just usually the drafter who has put it in for council's consideration. It's, the sponsorship line item has been there for probably 25 years on our ordinances. There is no specific protocols right now. The city attorney though, when they see a legislative change in the law, is doing the appropriate thing to bring to you an ordinance that relates to that legislative change. You are the body, you can determine whether to adopt it or not.
Belled out anywhere who sponsors?
No, you're accurate, council member. There is no specific protocol on that.
So who makes the decision? Who decided to put city attorney here? Just because someone, the drafter was from the city attorney's office?
We were requested to draft it because of the changes in the legislative session. So I think that the sponsorship went through the system that way.
Okay, okay.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Oh, yeah, we had.
It's fine. So motion carries 5-1.
Yeah, okay.
Motion carries 4-2.
Okay.
And H1, Mr. Mayor.
Resolution number 7944, Resolution for Budget Augmentations and Approval of Budget Revisions for the Period of September 24, 2013 through January 17, 2014.
I have some questions.
Want to make a motion to adopt?
I have some questions.
Motion second. Question.
Okay, I do have some questions on this and I went through this with staff a little bit. I guess my first questions are the ADP. We did a, you know, we increased, we increased that contract amount and some of that is included in this budget augmentation. It's basically charged back to some departments as indirect. Can you, do you have a spreadsheet showing who's getting char, how much, how much we dipped into departments for the ADP and where is it coming from among the departments?
For the record, Kate Thomas, Office of Management and Budget. We don't have a spreadsheet at this moment. I can certainly prepare something for council and get it to you. What we did was take the amount that the contract was amended by as well as make the full amount of the ADP contract allocated to various departments, including enterprise. But you'll see it in an indirect cost line item in the budget under the general fund. So that's where the majority of it sits. But you'll see through the augmentation project, process, the other amounts allocated.
Well, I guess one thing that I noted is that, and I, and I just want to make sure that the hit is going across all or there's some equity because I see that the Parks Department is getting about $35,000 taken out of their budget. We know the Parks Department is very stretched. We've been told that we can only maintain our parks at half of previous and desired levels. There's some cost savings in the Parks Department from the concessions that the park workers gave. And so now we're dipping into that $35,000, I understood, to do that. And I guess another problem I have is when we signed off on that ADP, you know, we increased the budget general fund and I'm trying to figure out if maybe when something like that goes on, we should be, have a little more discussion of where it comes from, the general fund. Because I am concerned that we're hitting into the Parks budget for this. And I want to know, is the city attorney's office coming? Are those indirects being allocated representatively among all departments?
Well, I think we depend on our staff to be fair with everybody and I personally don't want to get into macro managing their departments. They can tell us. But if they're telling us they're taking something from everybody, I take their word for it.
Well, I would like to know where they are and I don't find this micromanagement. I figure that we adopt the budget. When we adopt the budget, we know where the budget lines and costs are going. And we're dipping in many years. So can you tell me if, what was the logic and how you went about getting that money?
Well, there was no unfair amount to the Parks Department per se. The way that it's allocated in the augmentation report was because of a reimbursement. So it's not that we took money from parks. What I could do is if the council approves, I would be happy to provide a memo that outlines all of the information for you and get that to you following this meeting.
Why don't you get it back to us?
Well, I'm not comfortable with reaching into the Parks budget. I think it's a very small and stretched.
What about the other departments?
Well.
You happy with those?
I'm not sure if every, how it was taken from other departments. I have identified and had verification that $35,000 was taken out of the already stretched budget depart.
Well, she's going to get that information and get it to us.
Okay. And then my, my other question is forfeitures. Was there an increase in the forfeitures? Because that was one of the, you know, a lot of these are booking sort of things, but this was some revenue increase. Did the forfeitures get increased?
The amount that you're seeing on the augmentation report is when the forfeiture expenses are booked, they are taken from the forfeiture account and put to the expense line item. We did take a look at forfeiture amounts that have come in and to date, we have approximately $50,000 more than we did at this moment than we did in all of the last year. So it looks like they are coming in a little bit higher, but I don't have an explanation for why that is. I just have the budget report.
Okay, okay. So forfe, so, and where, if that revenue is coming in higher, it goes into which departments? It goes into city attorneys, police, how does, court?
Zach Haffner, for the record. When she said accounts, what she meant is that it goes into the forfeiture fund, the forfeiture revenues go into the forfeiture fund. And then when we augment or revise the budgets, what happens is we take the money from the forfeiture fund and transfer it over to the general fund where the expenses are incurred in the police department.
And does the city manager sign off on all of those? You know, are there requests to the forfeiture fund? Is that how it works by departments or how does that?
My understanding is that the forfeiture fund is at the discretion of the police chief and then those funds are then approved here through this process with the augmentation revision.
Well, as I said, I would like to propose that an augmentation not be made, taking ADP charges out of the Parks budget. I think it's a budget that needs extensive.
I have a motion in second on the floor. I have a motion and a second on the floor. You want to make an amendment? Is that what you're doing?
I would, I would like to.
Well, then you make the amendment and I'll ask for a motion in a second on it.
Can I add to the discussion? I just want clarification because I understand, maybe Jenny didn't get the clarification, but I would like that as well. Did ADP, did you guys pull money out, the Parks Department to pay for ADP? I think that's what I would like to just know.
So that, the allocation that you're seeing there is not specific to Parks. It's savings that were generated from a result of the local 39 contract in which a lot of the employees are located in the Parks Department as well as the Public Works Department. So when we have to identify a revenue source to pay for those, that's why it appears that those areas are being hit when they're not.
Okay.
Not hit unduly. It's a allocation that we make across departments as well as the enterprise fund. So we can certainly outline that for you more clearly if that's council's direction. But it's, it's a very equitable process.
Well, why, Mr. Mayor, if I may, why'd you seek out the cost savings in Parks and Public Works from local 39? Did you see cost savings in other departments that money was taken from ADP or ADP from?
The augmentation process is identifying an expenditure that's potentially an overage or when we need to augment the budget with an offsetting revenue. And so those are the areas that were identified and put for council's consideration in the augmentation report. They were not originally budgeted and that's why we need to come before you to do an augmentation with a, with an expense and an offsetting revenue.
If that $35,000 was not being recommended by you to augment into, is it going over to HR? Is that where it's going over?
Intergovernmental, I believe.
Intergovernmental. What would the Parks Director have authority and access to that money within regular procedures?
Those savings go into the general fund, sort of the bucket. It's not an additional Parks savings per se.
So we would have to then augment back into the Parks budget?
Correct.
That money?
Correct. If you wanted Parks to have the authority to expend over their originally budgeted amount, we would have to go through the augmentation process.
But this money is in their budget already?
This money was savings that goes into the general fund. It was already in their budget, from my understanding.
Zach Haffner, for the, for the record. The, the primary funding for this, what you're looking at is the $35,000 that you're primarily referring to is in salaries and benefits. And so if you wanted to bring it back to Parks and increase their budget authority, basically it would be a revision and you'd be moving this so-called savings from salaries and benefits down to services and supplies to increase services, is what it seems like you're kind of looking at.
But if the Parks Director felt, you know, we're going to open trainer this year or something like that and she needed some more, you know, lifeguards, she would have that in her budget and wait till the end of the year and then send it back to the?
But she could also come back and request it of us too.
If the Parks Director, Kate Thomas, for the record, if the Parks Director wanted to augment her budget to do one of those items that you mentioned, that would or would not, depending on where it falls under the council's provision, be something that the council will require us to go back and either identify funding for and go through a similar augmentation process. You know, we're trying to avoid to get to the place where we're asking council to find the revenue sources for the offsetting political decisions that you're making. And so we're, you know, we bring this very public augmentation process forward to show you where the revenues and the offsetting, the expenditures and the offsetting revenues are coming from for the items that have been approved, like say the ADP contract that went through the public process.
So when it goes through the public process, we need, you know, we didn't budget for this, we have 100 and, I can't remember what the ADP was. What was it, 180,000 or?
Yeah, it was reduced to 86, but.
86,000, okay. So, so it's, if it's 86,000, we're just pulling it out of Public Works and Parks then? Is that?
No, it's coming from a variety of sources.
Okay, okay. But I guess my point is if there's an unexpected expense, we're not going to go into stabilization, you'll go into the budget and figure out where there's been cost savings.
Correct.
In this case?
And that's what the Office of Management and Budget brings for you for your consideration to offsetting revenues. If we felt we needed to go into stabilization, there wasn't an offsetting expenditure to apply to that, we could certainly make that recommendation through the city manager to the council.
Now, I guess, having said that, I would have liked to know in a little more detail when we committed to that 86,000, where it was going to come out of, frankly. Because we had a cap, we had a big cap number on Parks and by virtue of the fact that we had some cost savings in our agreement through the bargaining group, you know, that budget has been reduced. And we look at that budget over a year longitudinally and see where we are. So we've dropped that budget down. And so I guess my point is through the AD, if we, when something's going to be attacked into a budget through an expense, I'd like, I want to see that when we go through the public process. So I'm not, I'm not pleased about that.
Okay.
I think I'll, I'll support the motion, but I feel there's a little more transparency when we go into some of these budget areas that we're, we're not quite discussing.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
I think she'd.
Excuse me? Yes, sir.
No, I just, I agree with Councilwoman Breckus. I think it's really important that we do look at that because anything regarding ADP, I felt very strongly about not, period. So I do feel like, you know, maybe we have more briefings on, you know, where you're going with this. So.
Where we're taking.
But second rate.
Okay.
Good thing you saved us that other 86,000.
Have a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H2.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Might we go back to G1 quickly?
G1?
Yeah, G1.
Do you want to take action on it or something?
Well, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider. I, excuse me, I was having a moment when we voted on that. I was one that was very vocal about not paying volunteers for various committees and I accidentally voted yes and I'd like to go back and reconsider that item.
Okay, I have a motion to reconsider item G1. Have a second.
I think the second has to come from someone who voted in the affirmative. I think that's our roles and I will second that as a courtesy to my fellow council members.
Now, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right.
I, I.
Yeah, we have to vote on the reconsideration. So I have a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now, we're at item G1.
Second.
Have a motion to adopt in a second. Now, all in favor are discussion. Now, your discussion.
No, I've, I've already said, I've made it very clear that I don't believe we pay any of our committee volunteers.
Okay, any other discussion? So.
Motion in second.
I have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let me have you raise your hands so I got all the ayes. All right, there's four. Now, no's?
No.
Raise your hands. All right, now, it passes 4-3.
Thank you. I appreciate the reconsideration.
That's okay. That's okay. Adam H., Adam H. Two.
Resolution Number 7945. Resolution adopting a clarified and expanded scope of special events subcommittee of the Reno City Council to include developing policies concerning special events, sponsorships, fees, cost recovery, city service requirements, and other special events issues pertaining to the Reno Municipal Code 513, Special Events and Special Activities.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask staff a question? Yep. This is, this is a part of the thought to help, this is, would you phrase this as a component of our artisan workshop discussion, Arts in the Parks and Sale, and this is kind of an effort?
Uh, no, this doesn't have to do with that, actually. The special events subcommittee, when council asked staff to go through our committees last year in December, we went through the subcommittee, and we saw the original intent of council in 2009 was just for the subcommittee to approve and go over sponsorship policies for special events. And after looking at that, we, staff feels that we would get better direction from the council if the subcommittee was permitted to look at general policies for special events. So, they could look at fees, they could look at cost recovery. It's so we could provide more efficient city services, essentially, so we can hear from the subcommittee before it goes to the general council. But of course, the council would have to make any of the final decisions on the recommendations from the subcommittee.
I thought the subcommittee was going to address, you know, maybe some of the policies related to some of the issues that keep coming up about searches at special events, and the other one was, you know, the artists wanting to be around the special events. Is that your understanding?
No, no, this was much more of the, all the special events and us tiering the different, the different groups from legacy to the smaller, you know, and this was, this was meant as just a process for us to vet some of these things before it came to council. But no, we have, we did not venture into that area.
Correct. We never have.
So, now, can I have a motion?
Move to adopt?
Second.
A motion and second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, now we go to I. One.
Which is Bill Number 6888, An Ordinance Authorizing the Issuance of the City of Reno, Nevada, 2002, Special Assessment District Number Four, Somerset Parkway Local Improvement Refunding Bond Series 2014, Providing the Form, Terms, and Conditions of the Bonds, and Other Details in Connection There With, and Providing Other Matters Relating There Too.
Have a motion? Do I have a second? Have a second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. Item J. One, Finance and Administration.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, City Manager Renee Rungis, for the record, you have before you an amendment to an agreement for attorney services with Fisher and Phillips for Labor and Employment Law Advice, Collective Bargaining Analysis, and Arbitration Presentation for Labor Relations, Grievance, and Employee Discipline Issues, in an amount not to exceed $150,000 for a total contract cost not to exceed $300,000. In January of 2013, the council approved the original contract for $150,000 for employer labor representation issues. And we are coming before the council now, because the city is still involved in the collective bargaining process with seven of our employee groups. Two of those groups are going to fact-finding in March next month. And in 2014, we have another labor contract that is opening for negotiation. So, I would be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Any questions at this time? Wait one minute, I've got a public comment.
I do have a question. I see the last paragraph of your staff report says that $30,000 of this were not spent for labor CBAs. They were spent for a court issue with the city attorney's office. Can you explain that expenditure?
The only thing I can say about it was a discrimination case issue. I can't talk about any of the details.
Okay. Well, I have a hard time with this. I mean, I, I think that when this came to us, it was going to be $150,000 for the services to do our collective bargaining agreements, and then it was taken outside of that scope and used, I guess, at the request of the city attorney's office. They needed some expertise that this contractor could provide that they didn't have in their office. Is that how it went?
That's my understanding, yes.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. That particular case was within this contract, and the city manager asked that our office take it over because of cost savings to the city, which we did. There was one component of it, though, that related to labor, and that's why a portion of the case was funded, or through the contract, with the labor lawyers who had special expertise in that area. So, it's not accurate that our office reached out to say, can you fund services from our office through this labor agreement with these particular lawyers? We did it in conjunction with one another, and we did it under the city manager's direction.
Well, I am uncomfortable with that. I thought this was CBA negotiations going forward, not under an in-place already related to one individual. So, I would like to see that this budget made whole through somewhere else in the budget, probably the city attorney's office that did not have the expertise for this. They have a services line budget, and so I'm uncomfortable. I think we're going through at a, at a $10,000 burn, dollar and out a month burn rate on this, and we're being asked, and we came up a little short, you know, and so maybe, if we feel that 10,000's enough, we didn't use it all, we used it for this external thing, maybe we drop this down to 120,000 dollars.
Okay, let's go, that's, we got away from questions. Now, we've got a public comment, and I'm going to let him speak. Mr. Jacobson? Mr. Jacobson, I'm going to honor your request for a couple of more minutes, and let you have five minutes.
Thank you, sir. Hopefully, I won't try to use that extra time. For the record, Dennis Jacobson, representing the Reno Firefighters Association, is president of that association. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, and Council. Thank you for hearing me today. I have spoken on this before, and it's near and dear to the hearts of my members, in that we have lived through what we believe is this process in the past, and it was somewhat inefficient, and I'll address that here in a minute. And we don't see the efficiencies gaining any, any ground on that. Again, it was back in 2000, or, excuse me, 2013 in January, when this was originally brought up to this council, and the council authorized the funding for this outside contractor. At that time, I spoke from past experience to this council about the inefficiencies and the built-in, we've perceived as problems with moving forward in a rapid manner. And I stand for you today, basically, looking in reverse, that those problems have continued, that those are no longer speculation, that those are actually a reality. To address a few of those, I'd like to talk a couple of excerpts from the minutes, the minutes of the January 16, 2013 meeting. The first is, which is a discussion between Councilman Jordan and Director of HR, Ms. Rungis, in which Ms. Rungis agreed that the funds requested, the 150,000 for the negotiation, the 75,000 for the grievance resolution, could actually cost substantially less. And I applaud her for being optimistic there. Unfortunately, because we're standing here today looking at refunding it, it didn't come to fruition. Following that, the city manager noted that there were mixed results in the negotiation processes that had just ended, and indicated that those negotiation contracts were without attorneys on the city side. And I do take a little bit of exception to that. I agree that there were mixed results. However, I'll address the without attorney section in a second, because I believe that's not exactly as accurate as it could be. Following that, Ms. Rungis again agreed with the city manager that negotiations held, again, without outside counsel could, and I quote, "be best represented as unproductive." And she goes on to, unquote, and she goes on to say that, you know, that you had a number of contracts still open at the time, which, of course, you did. What I'd like to remind the council of, and many of you were not here at that time, is that the 2011 negotiations across the board, with all of your labor groups that were open, were extensions of the 2010 negotiations, in which you did have outside counsel, namely, Mr. Charles Cockrell. Thank you very much. I had it on the tip of my tongue. And he was representing the city as chief negotiator through most of 2010 and well into 2011. So, again, I believe that a lot of the lack of production, or the, quote, "unproductiveness" that Ms. Rungis relayed to, was represented through Mr. Cockrell and the outside agent, which we now have, just in a different name. The next issue I'd like to bring up, less discussion, I find a little surprising, but yet not understandable, that it was not in the minutes here. Yet, it's a discussion that was had at this chamber regarding the potential of hiring this outside counsel, and it was between Councilwoman Naomi Jordan and the city manager. And I don't have it in front of me exactly, so I'm going to go out of memory, although I do think I remembered it pretty well. And if I get it incorrect, please correct me, Councilwoman. But that you had some concerns about exposing the city to future liabilities, such as you are facing now. And you had mentioned that you just come from the private sector, and most respectfully, from the legal industry, and that although $150,000 is a lot of money, and it certainly is, that in the legal world, it goes fast. And you had some concerns that, how far it would actually get through the process. And I know that you were assured from the city manager that this was a one-time expense, and that the contractor apparently had it guaranteed, or at least indicated, that the negotiations could be completed, much what you indicated a moment ago, for this amount of money. Unfortunately, we stand here today, and you're faced with not only adding some money to that, you're looking, you're requested to double the contract. And even at that point, you still are going to be doubling the contract with no, I believe, outside guarantee, that that will solve the eight, now eight outside, or outstanding contracts. The last item that I would like to reference real quickly from those minutes was a discussion that Councilwoman Breckis had with, again, Ms. Rungis, in that they discussed the pros and cons of doing it internally versus externally. And this is something we have always supported, is the internal. We find, it's, I think all the labor groups find it a little unusual. We sit down with our employers. It is us. It is your employees, when the process starts. We are your firemen, your policemen, the parks workers, the sewer workers, and we have across the table from us, you know, quite frankly, the awesome power and expertise of the city. And we do not secure outside counsel. We sit down as your employees, and we try to get through the process in an expeditious manner. And I'm not to be appalled, or to be, you know, somewhat proud, that the city apparently has enough concern with its employees to, quote-unquote, lawyer up, to, you know, to start out the process with a lawyer. And in that, in my opinion, and it was back in 2013, is the problem. It is the, what we're facing today, in that we have a situation that everybody at the table, both sides, labor and the city, don't want to be there. We want to get this done. We want to move on with the city's business. We want to move on with serving the public. The only real entity at the table who may have another agenda, and rightfully so, because they work for another entity, private entity, is the outside attorney, who is responsible for billow, billowers to his or her agency. In this case, apparently, he's done quite a good job, because apparently, other than the $30,000 in question, the money has been exhausted, and you're looking at more money. That alone causes a problem, and I do believe it's the ongoing problem, and it's what we've been facing from 2010 to date, and we will not get away from the problem until we look internally and realize that we need to sit down as a city. On that, I'd just like to say that I stand here with the Reno firefighters and oppose any further public funding being sent to line pockets of private attorneys, and that I encourage you to look internally, whether it includes new, new personnel for our legal department, but that would be a better place for our money to be spent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Close the public comment. Mr. Klinger.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and council members, I just want to correct a statement that was made by Mr. Jacobson, as far as this being a one-time expense. I don't remember my comments specifically that day, but I don't recollect that I said it's a one-time expense. And if I did, obviously, those, those comments would not be correct, because this is not a one-time expense. These labor negotiations, it's a very long and sometimes difficult process, and so this, this is going to be an ongoing expense that, that we are going to continue to have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At one time, didn't, before we got here, didn't you have Councilman Ayazi and Councilwoman Sfaraza sit down at the table with them? I mean, experience has always been that, in the end, the attorneys win. Really, they do. And if you say, Andrew, that this is an ongoing expense, how much more ongoing is this going to be? So, I mean, you don't know that. We don't have a, you know, we don't have a crystal ball. But at the same time, is it possible to sit down and mediate before we allocate more money and keep allocating more money? If you look at what's happening, you know, in Las Vegas, there was that big, you know, big contract that was just awarded. I think, you know, I would like to see where, because at some point, it seems like we are really, you know, it just, I think it's not in the best interest of the city to continue to keep throwing money at this and money at this.
Ms. Jordan? Ms. Jordan, did you have something, and then Mr. Dorick?
Yeah, I just, my comments are to, at least from my recollection, to affirm some of the things that I said relative to how expensive attorneys are, and that appears to be coming to fruition today, that, so I affirm what your recollection is. I believe that to be true.
And, Mr. Mayor, I guess just to answer Councilwoman Shivi's question, I don't think it would, would help in this case. I mean, I think the, some of the things that we're asking for are long-term reforms, when it comes to, you know, certain benefits, certain retiree benefits, you know, help, paying for a portion of retirement, those sorts of things. So, I mean, I think what we're asking for is very reasonable, and I don't know that having
Can you get that by sitting down and with, with us, or do we have to continue with the, do you think?
We, it's
I mean, I'm not agreeing to these things. I'm just saying, I just
It's ultimately a council decision, but I mean, I would recommend, from our stand, from my standpoint, I do think this is the, the best path forward for, for us as a city. I mean, I think the circumstances last time were a little bit different. We were trying to, you know, negotiate some concessions, and some of those ended up being permanent, some of them ended up being temporary. And what we're talking about now are some long-term reforms that for us as a city to
I know, I understand that.
Moving forward are critical.
How much do you think it's going to cost us? I mean, how much are we willing to pay to get there?
Well, when, I mean, to me, when we're talking about an OPEB liability of $210 million, to put it in perspective, I think this is a
But that also doesn't mean you're going to get it either. That's
There's no guarantee.
No, but I think, I think we owe it, I think we owe it to the public to fight for it. I mean, I think, I think, I mean, I
Well, you can fight for it. I'm just saying, how, how much are we going to spend at this? I just, do you have any idea?
The concern I have is, I mean, we've all seen, I mean, the unreasonable things that some of our bargaining units are asking for. I mean, some extremely unreasonable things that they're asking for. And I think we've got to have the best people at the table to help us as we move through this process.
I just think there's no guarantee, so how much more are we going to?
I think it's critical that we have the best people at the table, and I think, and I think it's, and I think if we, if we back away from them now, I think it puts us in a position of weakness. I mean, these guys, these guys have been leading the charge force for the past year, and I think if we step aside now and say we're not going to keep them on, in, in all of these negotiations that were going, including the ones that's just getting ready to open up, I think it puts us in a position of weakness.
Okay, Ms. Adra.
I agree with those statements. And in addition to that, the times really have changed. When we negotiated previously, we had a much larger staff than we do now, that's able to, you know, sit down and visit with, and be involved in the negotiations. We've had to carve back, in particular, our HR department, and legal as well. We've just been carved back to barely able to function. So, and that kind of addresses the point that you made, that you guys feel as though, fire feels as though you personally come in. Your membership is still strong. You haven't been hit the way our, our staff levels have been hit. And we do need to have qualified, experienced people handling the negotiations for us, because we do have huge liabilities pending in front of us, and we need to shore that up with the best quality we can.
Mr. Delgado.
If you can give me a quick little history on, as Councilwoman Zar is just talking about, that staffing levels aren't the same, and to go on what Councilwoman Shivi was saying, is if we just, are we appropriating these funds to other possibly staffing opportunities for us to build up those departments, so we're not continuously having to go to bar with, with, with legal and everything else? I mean, to go to your point, you know, if we're getting hit hard in HR, are we putting the dollars in other places that can possibly help us out in the long term? But before we dive into that, Mr. Managers, how did we handle the stuff prior to? And did we have somebody that dealt with labor ongoingly? And what were the cost benefits? What were the ROIs? And that's kind of what I'm trying to get to.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the short answer is, is we did have outside counsel previously. I think Mr. Jacobson mentioned it. Charlie Cockrell, I think, was, was the
So, are these, are these expenses basically the same as they've always been, where we're spending about 300,000, or 150,000 a year? I mean, is that, on average, what we've been doing?
Renee Rungis, for the record, Councilmember Delgado, actually, Mr. Cockrell's expenses were about half.
They were, they were half?
In terms of hourly rates.
Okay. So, I mean, that just
Can I just make a, kind of a general statement? And I know, having, having, have spent 20 years in the legal industry, you know, I'm going to throw out that term that sometimes you get what you pay for. And it's, I relate it to this. There can be many people that are, that have a doctor's, that they've gone to medical school and they're doctors. But it doesn't mean that you go to your eye doctor to have your heart checked out. So, this is how I kind of relate, Mr. Mayor does, apparently. This is kind of how I relate this, is obviously, management sought out the expert in this area, and that expert may cost more, but in the long run, it may be of more benefit overall to, to, to the community. And having been in this legal environment, I can tell you that the differences of an expert and a generalist are enormous. So, that's just, and from an experience level.
So, Cockrell was in a labor attorney, labor support. He was someone different?
I'm sorry, would you repeat your question?
The person that, that we're charging, he was half as much as John Cockrell?
On an hourly rate basis, roughly.
And his expertise was in?
The same labor and employment law. Mr. Mayor, may I?
I was just trying to make sure he wasn't a generalist and he was specialized in labor.
But I think the reason, the reason we sought this group out was because of the successes that they've had in Southern Nevada. I mean, they've had some great successes in Southern Nevada, and that's why we sought out this group to represent us. I mean, it comes down to what Nellam was saying, though, is we wanted to go get the best.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not, I am pleased so far with the services I've seen them provide. I'm not, I mean, I'm satisfied. I think we had a good success with Local 39. I think we have a long road ahead of us. I think the fundamental question to us, and I think we touched on this and made a different decision during budget cycle, is whether or not we want to enhance this ability in-house. There may be reasons for it. I mean, we have these, it's almost, it's not like a one-time thing. It's almost like they're ongoing, and that would be enhancement in the HR department. We talked about that. We have an HR department of three professionals, or, and our legal department. Let's not forget, this is a vote to bring in outside counsel. I've seen the law, the city attorney's office lose some faces this year and bring on some new faces this year, and I don't know if they, you know, staffed up to backfill some of this expertise that we're paying for. That's a question I don't want an answer for. I'm just inquiring. It's the questions that I think we need to discuss maybe at the budget cycle. But I will, I will repeat, I am unhappy with this going for something that I don't feel was explained to us, and so I would offer that we drop this down to $120,000. If there's $30,000 cush that was able to go somewhere else, last go around, then let's drop this down to $120,000. And I also, back to our previous discussion about the ADP, want to know, is this all going to come out of HR budget this year for these, because we got six minutes left. Is this in your budget right now?
Yes, it is.
Robert Chisel, Finance Director. It's going to come out of, the contract is an extension for a year, so it'll come out of this fiscal year and next fiscal year out of the human resources.
Out of the HR budget?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. Our office does have an outside legal counsel line item. This council has authority to use that money. We did not contract with this firm to do the work. However, you could, if you chose to, move some of that funding into the HR budget to do it. It wouldn't be out of our office. We aren't, we aren't looking at the bills. We aren't managing those bills, and we're not managing this contract. But I do put that out there because, Council, we have kept everything in-house this year, and so we've been very proactive not to come to you to seek outside legal counsel. So, you do have a little bit of line item budget in our budget if you'd like to use it.
Well, and we can do that. I tell you, when you go to staff up with the type of expertise, whether you're for or against it, whatever else, I don't think you've got a big enough budget to hire professional people that are going to do this type of work, or I don't think personnel does. I don't think we have enough in the other, because it's awfully expensive to bang these type of professionals in. Yes?
Robert Chisel, again, for the record, and a couple of things I'd like to note. We did try to meet with a number of the groups one-on-one before we brought in outside counsel to try to come up with a resolution. We were unsuccessful, so we did go this route. I'd also add that the other side does hire outside expertise to assist them, so it is, you know, only fair that we also provide the same.
I totally agree with you. I get that. I just wondered, do you have any idea what this, what this could cost?
That's what they're projecting right now. That's the crystal ball that they're projecting out of. Yes?
I mean, it's really just, to answer your question, I mean, it's really just depending on how long the process takes. I mean, I think, though, when you, when you put it into perspective, though, I mean, to me, where you have to put it into perspective is relative to, you know, the savings that we're trying to achieve in the long term. And the savings that we're trying to achieve in the long term are huge, and, I mean, I think I agree with what the mayor is saying, that, I don't disagree that we need more staff in the HR department, you know, an employee relations-
Right.
-manager would be helpful, but even if you had that position, I don't want to leave this council to believe that if we had that position, that we still wouldn't need outside counsel. I believe we would.
Yeah. All right. Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion if there's no other members who want to-
No, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm prepared to motion that we approve the contract with the caveats that it goes solely for collective bargaining agreements going forward, negotiations going forward, and that $30,000 of it, this fiscal year, come out of that, the line item in the city attorney's office for outside counsel.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. This covered grievances and other matters our office doesn't provide services for. We did offer to combine to try to seek an attorney in those areas, but this has never been a function our office has covered in over 20 years. So, if you do streamline that, I'm concerned you will not have representation in those other areas, and HR would have to come back to you on a one-on-one, unless you're asking our office to try to pick that up. This, I'm confused where the duties are flowing.
I think if there's, my understanding is that we're, the contract that we're approving is for collective bargaining agreement negotiations. If there's, if there's other issues that come up and they need to, and they need to hire outside counsel and they want to use this same contract, I don't have a problem with them coming and letting us know that.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, we do.
Yes, Renee Rungis, for the record. I would like to remind council and everyone else that we also do have a contract with the MAC Law Firm to handle grievances and arbitrations, and they have actually been doing the bulk of that work as it relates to grievances and arbitrations.
Okay.
You're okay with the direction we're going?
Yes.
So, you're taking $30,000 out of theirs, or is that if we go?
No, $30,000, the city attorney offered that up. They've got, they've got a line item in their budget for outside counsel that they have not used this year, that we could, we could pull $30,000 out of. I mean, if something comes up on their end and we start to exceed that, we'll have to address that when it comes up.
Mr. Klinger.
But, I mean, right now, they're saying that it's available.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I guess I just want to clarify the motion, I mean, because what's, what's in the recommended motion is employment law advice, collective bargaining, analysis. The arbitration representation, we do have a separate agreement for that, but I want to make sure with, with my staff that, I mean, when we're talking about employment law advice, I mean, that's something that we would seek from this firm. Obviously, it would more than likely be related to negotiations, but I just want to get clarification on that so we don't put ourselves in a, in a box here.
Correct. I think the way we had written it was to, was with the city attorneys to make sure we covered any potential areas that would come up, and that would, that includes all the arbitration, it includes the collective bargaining, and includes, employment law advice includes labor relations, grievance, and employee discipline issues. All those need to be included because they all are included and it's all associated. And my understanding is what your, their motion was, it was for the budget, budgetary line item of $30,000.
So, at this point, we're making clarity that the services he'll be providing are more expansive than what was previously discussed. Is that, is that correct?
No, it is as was discussed before and as is in the staff report.
Okay. Okay, then, I'll make the recommendation consistent with this. It's represented in the staff report, with that amendment, that the $30,000 for outside services be used this fiscal into that, into the HR budget.
Okay. Have a motion, second? Second's okay with the amendment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now, we'll go to item J3.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Megan Salcedo for the record. We are seeking your direction on two issues today related to the shared federal framework that the RTC has spearheaded. The first is your approval, consideration and possible approval of the shared federal framework document that was included with the staff report. And the second is confirmation of prior council direction regarding the city's participation in the group's trip to Washington, D.C. in early March. As you know, the platform before you has priorities from other entities that are without, outside the city's purview and that you haven't discussed before, so we wanted to bring it before you for your approval before it is presented in Washington, D.C. with the City of Reno's name on it. As you also know, the city's federal platform contains broad areas on which the city coordinates with other regional partners on issues such as transportation and flood control, but there has not been any specific projects included in the city's platform outside of the city's purview. So, that is before you today, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
I do have a question. There's a project in here, and I guess this is where, you know, we test the shared nature of this. It's a half-billion-dollar transportation project that does not appear on our long-range transportation plan for the City of Reno. It's called the Pyramid Highway slash US 395 Connector. We're fondly calling this the Northeast Connector, and this is a project that understands the environmental impact right now. It would go from, I guess, Pyramid Highway through Sun Valley, over Rajio Parkway, down to Par Boulevard. Half-billion-dollar transportation investment in our community. We have not had a chance as a body to really explore whether or not we want to spend a half-billion dollars on that roadway. There was a public workshop a couple months ago, and a number of Sun Valley residents were there expressing concern about housing takes. So, I'm not really comfortable. I see City of Sparks is the contact on this, regional transportation. You know, I don't, I don't see this hits my priority list or one that we've even discussed at this table, and it has a big price tag which would, you know, possibly displace other transportation investments in our community. Do you have any comments as our staff talked about the merit of this project?
From a staff level, I'm not aware of any conversations to that end, and that is the difficulty with this platform containing priorities of every other entity that this entity hasn't discussed or approved. And so, that's why, before we tell RTC that they can print this and send it to D.C., we wanted to bring it to you for that discussion to take place.
Yeah, and just as follow-up, you know, I'd be, I'm comfortable with, you know, Douglas County or, you know, muscles up at Tahoe, but when I see a road project that comes through, the bulk of it through the City of Reno property, you know, it's maybe a 13-mile project and eight of it is in the City of Reno, and we haven't even discussed it, that makes me uncomfortable.
Mr. Mayor, I think that this is exactly what regional planning evokes. We need to have the partnership spirit and follow-through, not just spirit, but follow-through, to step up to the plate, recognizing that we are one region. So, if an activity or a project has been identified, and we could certainly have the Regional Transportation Commission speak to that to answer any of your specific questions, but I think it is the integrity of regional planning that it isn't always within our specific boundaries, but it is for our region's good. Mr.?
Gibson, you have something to say, sir? Since you've been pushing it, why don't you brief us?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for the record, Lee Gibson, Executive Director of the RTC, thank you for the opportunity to comment. The project that Councilwoman Brackus refers to is the 395 Pyramid Connector. It is in our regional transportation plan. It is a project that is, right now, the draft environmental impact statement has been circulated, and the comments are being reviewed, and those comments will be developed and then resubmitted back to the Federal Highway Administration for them to act upon and perhaps issue a record of decision. It's a project to be implemented jointly with the Regional Transportation Commission and the Nevada Department of Transportation. This is ostensibly a state facility ultimately, and involves a number of state improvements. The funding for the project is expected to be federal funding that will come through either traditional federal sources such as the National Highway System Accounts or through perhaps a Transportation Infrastructure Finance Innovation Act loan. So, these are the projects. We presented this project, I believe we presented this project to the city council. We've presented it to the county commission, the City of Sparks, and I know the city of, I'm positive you were notified about the draft environmental impact statement, and that circu, that document was circulated around. As far as the shared federal framework and the document, again, Councilman Brackus refers to, I don't know that that document was intended to be any reflection of a specific body endorsing any particular project. It was simply a compilation of what amounts to the region's priorities as seen from a number of perspectives and adopted by a number of entities. So, we do have these situations where there may be projects or initiatives that one entity has adopted, but perhaps another entity has not adopted or may still looking at. So, I know the document was not meant to be an, quote, endorsement, but just simply a compilation and reference point for folks to look at.
Right. Any questions, Mr. Gibson?
Well, I have a question, manager. What work have we done at the staff level in planning for this half-billion-dollar investment in our northeast part of the city? Where does it fall on our City of Reno projects, of priorities for road projects?
I, Mr. Mayor, council, I'd look to staff to answer that question. I'm not sure that we've spent a lot of time on this.
I think RTC probably looked at it.
For the record, Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager. I know I did attend the workshop. I'm not familiar with any particular action that we brought forward for council endorsement on that particular project. That being said, it's, it's probably, like Lee said, had been included in a plan that was presented to the council somewhere along the way that included everything that was going on in the region. So, I think the question really, really comes down to, to what degree is there really consensus from the city council as you're asking on that particular project? And I don't know that we've had any formal, I'm not aware of any formal recommendation to you to say what we think about that project versus, say, widening I-80 or whatever the alternatives might be. I don't know.
I think it was discussed at RTC with our representatives and stuff there. I remember when I sat on the board for a while, there was discussions about this and several projects, but nobody had come back to councils or anything with it. These are just suggestions and a cooperation of what we're looking at and what we'd like to dream of doing if we could do them.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Two comments, and I'm new to RTC, so I have not been fully briefed on this particular project to this point, and I look forward, I know there's probably more, much more information coming to me, being on the board. I will say, I believe you said there's environmental impact statement that is already being performed on this project?
That's, that's correct. There's been a environmental impact statement, preliminary engineering design effort that's been underway for probably four years, where we've looked at different alignments. We've worked through a number of public outreach efforts with Sun Valley, looking at different alignments through there.
That, I'm very glad to hear that. The second thing, I will echo, you know, just some hesitation from my seat here as a city council member on the size, the monetary size of this project and the value that it brings, but, again, I'm new and, and I need to see things from a larger perspective from RTC before I could have a definite position on that. But I would like maybe a presentation to come forward to this.
We'd be happy to, we'd be happy to provide you a presentation. For the record, let me make very clear, the half-billion-dollar investment that Councilwoman Brackus refers to, that's, it would most likely be a compilation, again, of federal funds that would flow through the Nevada Department of Transportation and perhaps RTC funds that would also be applied to that project as part of our regional street and highway program.
Well, this is just suggestions of the whole big group that's been meeting. I haven't been participating, but the other groups, these are just suggestions. There's nothing ironclad that we have to live with or do anything when you come down to do it.
That's correct.
We're going to get a hell of a lot of say-so in it, so I think there's flexibility to it. Yes?
And I appreciate, Mr. Gibson, saying that nothing's been endorsed by certain groups, it's just line eyes, but I think this one isn't a dream as much as you're already doing the impact environment, IAS, right, EIS?
Permit?
So, this much isn't as much a dream shot because you're already doing the studying of it, and so that's, want to make sure that's clear. So, you have to be good here to get that presentation from you. I don't think we've had a formal presentation as much as there's been conversation outside of chambers about projects that have been happening outside, so I look forward to that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think there's a disconnect between RTC planning and City of Reno planning, and I think at some point, there needs to be a connection, a strong connection of what is in the RTP, the Regional Transportation Plan, and that that has been endorsed by the city council as, as where they want to see the priorities for transportation improvements in our city.
I think over the years, I don't see- A disconnect, I think over the years, members that have sat on RTC have come back and told the council there's going, but I see this thing as not a commitment, but this is a wish list. These are things that we want to do in the future if we can. I don't think RTC's ever tried to cut us out of any negotiation or discussions.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may add for the record, the RTC has a permanent technical advisory committee, and the City of Reno has representatives on that technical advisory committee, and they receive briefings and updates on these projects, including the 395 Connector.
And some of those, maybe we need to have, get more reports back once in a while from our- from our committee members of that, of what's going on. Yes?
No.
Okay.
But I just have one more general comment. I think there's a number of people from the council that are going, there's some thirty-something people regionally that are going back to this. I guess my concern is more to the size of this document, and it's a pretty heavy read, and my concern is--
We pride ourselves on that at RTC.
Yeah. Well, that's my concern, is the effectiveness of such a voluminous document in such a short amount of time that we're gonna have back there. So I'll just go on the record and say, I think there's too much here to be effective.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, and Councilwoman Jordan, I think you're absolutely correct, but remember, this is a resource document for us to use. I don't intend to leave this, at least with the folks I'm planning on meeting with. I'm not gonna leave them the whole document. I'll really, you know, create a concise little list for, say, on RTC transportation issues and present that. This is really to help us really plan for those meetings. But you're right, it is a very voluminous document, and I think it's a testament to the fact that we do have a broad array of federal initiatives. There's things in there I didn't know about that I'm glad I now know about, because I think there are ways we can perhaps leverage, you know, BLM policies and whatnot to help us advance transportation, so.
And the next step that we'll be involved in before that trip to Washington DC is identifying talking points and the real, you know, the three-two punch that will be presented to the various congressional members that we're meeting with.
So are you meeting with thirty-five people with each congressional? Because if you are, it's a waste of time.
No. That's the beauty of this trip, is people will be able to, entities will be able to break off and visit with the representatives that have the most interest to them in their project.
Okay, okay. Because I've already talked to a couple senators and a couple congressmen, and they were very nervous we were gonna try to show up with thirty-five people and give this booklet out to everybody we met, and so I'm kinda relieved that you're telling me we're not giving that booklet out to everybody.
We will endeavor to be concise.
So what you're looking for, Andrew, is just our approval of sending staff members there?
Megan Salsito, for the record. Back in September, council previously directed the city manager to use his discretion in sending certain staff members, and because the trip was originally scheduled for October, and now we're looking at March, and there's been such a long delay, we wanted to bring that back for your confirmation of direction, and then also for, I think council directed that council members could use their discretionary funds to attend as well.
And how many staff members do we anticipate going?
Three.
I think right now we're planning on three.
And I've offered to pay for, out of my discretionary funds, to pay for one of those individuals' travel expenses.
And the rest of that's coming out of your budget?
Yes, we have travel funds for the rest of it.
Okay. So I'll move to approve staff's recommendation.
How many council members are going back?
Three.
Three. You going? I'm going.
Four.
Four.
You going, Mr. George? Ms. Brackus? Okay, so there's four council. I have a motion and second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Now, we will go to board and commission appointments. We have none. Now we'll go to items identification for mayor and council. I have two items that I would like to put on item L1, under item L1. In February, on the twenty-sixth agenda, because of a letter that recently came out about legal counsel, I would like for us to have staff look into how we would go about hiring outside legal counsel for the purpose of representation regarding medical marijuana establishments, and authorize the city manager to execute a contract if necessary. There is a, gonna be a ruling coming down on the twenty-seventh, but I'd like to get the authority to proceed in case they rule that we can't do certain things. Is that okay with you all?
No, that's fine with me.
That's all I'm putting on for discussion. And then on the--
Could I just expound on that? The one issue is going to be that it may well be, if the state barred, their initial preliminary draft seems to indicate that public lawyers providing legal advice are violating 1.2D of the professional rules of conduct. If that applies to public lawyers, it's going to apply to all lawyers, and that's going to be the conundrum, is whether any lawyer within the state of Nevada is going to be able to legally provide advice to any governmental body concerning medical marijuana, and that's, we'll get some indication on the twenty-seventh when the state bar meets with their draft opinion.
Also, on the twenty-sixth, I doubt, I have a city manager put an item on to discuss pay benefits for city council and the city attorney's office. Any others you want to put on?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like for us, next week, or at our next meeting, also on the twenty-sixth, to look at moratorium for new pet store business licenses and permits. This relates to the action that we took last, at our last meeting, and staff is moving forward with reviewing the issues with pet store operations as well as puppy mills. But there is some concern that we need to put a block up so that others can't come in to add to the problem that we're investigating. So a moratorium for new pet store business licenses.
Yes, ma'am.
I have two. Mayor, there has been a constituent who has made a complaint, which he feels is pursuant to the allowances to the waste management contract, about something on the rollout of the waste management of that contract that applies to him and to other customers. And so I guess, I'd like an understanding to discuss, or have an understanding from staff. Is there a procedure for complaints specified in the waste management contract? What is that procedure? And has this, which this individual is calling an official complaint, you know, how has it been resolved, and how will we go about that? Because we're rolling it out. My second one is, I'd like an update on the progress of the Virginia Street Bridge project. Are we to bid, and how much in funds have been expended so far, and where we feel the time, a critical, a timeline path of this project with critical elements?
Also, you know, one thing under the animal, I would like to look into ordinance. Good. Oh, under the animal thing that we're looking at, I'd like for staff to look at an ordinance of about ten items, records on origin of animal, date born, date received, date of medical exam, medication logs, date of sale, new owner information, and all records kept for at least a year, if we go along whatever we're doing. But I want to see the ordinance is tightened up, and I'd like to consider that.
And maybe we should add to that list. I was just advised this morning, I don't have a lot of detail on it yet, that the Humane Society is at risk of losing a $500,000 grant that it receives from the government relating to the no-kill, the save services that they provide, apparently because they're not getting cooperation from the county side of the operation. So we need to be able to review that and take any action that is, might be available in assisting that operation to ensure that the Humane Society does not lose a $500,000 grant.
Also, I'd like to, I know at one time we asked for an audit of animal control. They were gonna do an internal audit. I've never seen a copy of it, but I think we should ask for an external audit of animal control to see what's happened with the money and things like that over the years, because at one time there was a surplus. I'd like to know if that surplus is still there, because they moved it under the sheriff's department. We've never had an accounting of that, and I would like to request, or have that brought back, a request to have an outside audit, even if we have to pay for it. Any other agenda, Mr. Delgado?
If, to bring to, is Black Rock Solar, working on some solar paneling. There's a school that they would like to, the school is trying to get some solar paneling to be more efficient, and they're finding it really hard to get the process moving more in terms of the special use permit. See if we can get staff to work and to look at some of that zoning, because the issue is it being next residential, to see if there is something that we can do in work with solar paneling in schools and such next residential.
All right, any other items for future? All right, any liaison reports, Ms. Brackus?
No, Mayor, I don't have anything.
Ms. Zadra? And then, Mr. Delgado? Mr. George? Ms. Jordan? And Ms. Hillary? And some of these things are where we could be bringing up stuff like at RTC and stuff. RTC members or stuff could be reporting back to us, or different committees we sit on. This is the opportune time for us to be able to voice some of those things that we've heard or discussed. Any reports of conferences or professional meetings? Performance evaluation of the city clerk? Yes?
Well, Mayor, that's our job, because the clerk reports to us.
Yep.
And I have the charter here that outlines, since there wasn't, there wasn't a report with this, was there? No. So I have the charter open, and what the clerk does, should we just talk?
I think she's done a hell of a job. I don't care what it says in the book.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know what all we gotta go through.
She's supposed to keep the corporate seal on the books and papers, attend all the meetings, sign warrants.
Yep, she does all those.
Sign the licenses. I see licenses all around town in the businesses.
Yeah, she does all those.
Keep a journal, result of the vote, and to be collector of all the fees and penalties, kind of the cash rolling sort of thing. And so I, you know, I never hear any issues with any of that. I think things look good. The minutes look very good. I think she's got a tremendous staff over there, and I'd like to call out in particularly Beverly. So--
They've all done, she's done an excellent job for twelve years I've been around.
Yeah, so I'm happy, and just wanted to kind of go over what it says in the charter.
No, that's good. That's good. I think she's done an outstanding job, and I think we need to give her a vote of confidence. I'll entertain a motion. Whatever you gotta do.
I'd like to say a few words as well. It's been a pleasure over this last, especially being a newbie on council, and Lynette being such a pleasure in being able to work with me and the process, and being so accessible and available to help with that. So thanks again, Lynette, you did a great job. This year, looking forward to several other years ahead, so thanks again.
Thank you.
That was my only thing, is you have no ideas of retirement anytime soon, do you?
No, not soon, thank you.
We could have Chief Pitts talk to her about a jail cell if she wants to talk about retirement.
No, no, my experience has always been great with her as well. Let me just echo everybody else's, and always with a smile on her face. So thank you. I know you do a tremendous job, and you juggle many things, and you are the keeper of some serious institutional knowledge, which is invaluable, so thank you.
Thank you all very much.
So I'm gonna combine L5 and L4 as one discussion.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may, on L5, I think that, just like the manager, we kind of fleshed out how to go through the evaluation next year for him, and had some expectations. And I'd like to maybe convene that same process. I'd be willing to sit as a subcommittee, or, you know, sit with the HR director and one of the other council members if they're interested, so that next time we have a little more formal before-the-meeting scoring, and we can have a two-way discussion, so.
Sounds great. Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to. And if another council member would like to join me on that also, maybe, like we did last?
We can do that. We don't have to officially do it.
Okay, okay.
Have a motion, have a second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item L6, Ms. Jordan?
Resolution number 7946, resolution donating council donation funds to the Reno River Festival Foundation for the 2014 Reno River Festival kayaking event showcasing Reno and the Truckee River Whitewater Park in the amount of $1,750.
Ms. Jordan, motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item L7, Mr. Delgado. Oh, we already did those, that's right. Now, any, wait a minute. Oh, you're back. I almost got by without you.
Almost.
But let's go ahead and tell us what we're doing with F1.
Once again, Claudia Hansen, Planning Engineering Manager, for the record. And our discussion's out in the lobby. I think we changed a little bit, is what we discussed up here in, on page eighty-eight of the ordinance, in the beginning of the mixed-use standards, 1808-301, where it discusses off-street parking location, adding in a subsection that says the project, if the project is located within a secondary corridor and the parking location is modified through a special use permit process, then you'd be able to alter the location of the parking. And there's some formatting changes with that, but we can show you that at the second reading. And one more change in the same section, subsection fifteen, just above 1808-405, where it discusses special use permits for land use intensities and building orientations, orientation. What they were discussing is just taking out the exceptions of the regional centers and the listed TODs, so we can just take out the proposed language to only allow the special use permits in regional centers and the specific TODs. So subsection fifteen B would read new development that does not comply with subsection A1 land use intensities, and A7 building orientation and/or the land use intensity is listed in the specific overlay may be allowed with a special use permit unless otherwise prohibited by section 1812-304. So it's just taking out the proposed changes, and I believe that covers, Angela's nodding her head, yes.
Well, Ms. Hanson, if we go with these changes, are these changes that were at topic at the planning commission, that you think planning commissioners heard, understood, and rejected, and sent up the ordinance to us as written?
Rejected?
I believe so.
So we will have unhappy planning commissioners who, you know, and that's our prerogative. They, we see it, we can see it differently, certainly, but I am concerned about the, that if we do this, you know, they're the citizen planners, they see this a lot more than we do. They saw it a different way, and so I am concerned. I think that we need to really put faith in what they do and what they recommend to us, and I think they looked at it a lot deeper than us. So I am a little uncomfortable with this, but I'd like to hear from a--
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to refer with the changes that were made, and I think, you know, I mean, the planning commission looks at it, and they send it to us, and ultimately we're the policymakers, and it's up to us to decide how we want to move forward with that. And I think we just see it differently. I think, at the end of the day, we're the ones ultimately responsible, so.
And I would second with the comment that it is not uncommon, unfortunately it happens, but it is not uncommon that other decisions come to us on projects, and we take different action. We deny their recommendation when we hear from the public, which is exactly what this is about. We're hearing from the public, and I'm very comfortable that we're now with those, thank you, Claudia, and the community for being involved in that. We've covered what my intent was when we initiated this way too long ago.
And I don't, I don't, I mean, we're not rejecting what they said, we're just making a couple alternative changes to it.
The majority, I mean, there's many more changes in there that you are accepting by making these changes, and the majority of them you are accepting.
Have a motion, second. Any further discussion?
And if I'm just clarifying, that includes the additional land uses for the western gateway?
Yes.
And you think the outdoor storage is okay in our gateway?
Through a special use permit, I do.
Yep. All right, Ms. Jordan, you had something?
No, the comments were just, it's nice to see that, you know, we're taking into consideration the developers, who are doing the developing, and certainly have their finger on the pulse of what works and what doesn't. And I'm not sure, is when this stuff comes before the planning, the planning commission, and even for us, visuals of what this really looks like, in other words, an example of a property that doesn't have the frontage parking allowed, if I'm not mistaken, is that there's a shopping center on South Virginia where Total Wine is, and--
Yes.
Okay, that's an example of a really uninviting shopping center that's blocked off to the street, and you have to access it, parking through the back.
Correct. That wasn't, that wasn't developed under this, that was developed under a previous ordinance, though. That wasn't developed under--
Yeah, I'm giving it as an example of, that's, that's an example of what not allowing the frontage parking looks like. the frontage parking looks like, so that, I think, as new people in particular, having a visual of the impacts and the pros and the cons is always helpful. But kudos to working it out during the --
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Mr. Mayor, I won't be but supporting this. I think, one, I'm not certain that this has been briefed enough so that we have concrete examples of what exactly we are changing from what the planning commission knew, saw. This isn't a project, this is a standard, and I'm not comfortable also without making these changes, without sending this down in a referral to the planning commission or reconsidering.
Okay, that's fine. Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Those vote no, show the vote six-one.
Thank you.
Now, public hearing, we have any public hearing cards?
Comment.
Public comment, I mean. Why'd you put public hearing?
We don't have one.
You put it on there. Says none. Mr. Wilkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to express my appreciation to the council and the mayor for the work they do for the public and for the citizens, so it looks like it's a hard job. My name's Barton Wilkinson. I'm a street guitar player, street musician, and I'm here to comment on the code revisions. I'm sure you've heard of Steve White and the code revisions that he submitted. And, tell you a little bit about myself, I'm a street guitar player, and so I have an interest in these particular issues. I know it's been in motion for some time. And the, I've also, I've been to college, and so I have a degree in economics, and the professors that I had, they had a general consensus that the greatest way of asserting economic growth was through upholding, defining, and upholding human rights. And, and so the Ninth Circuit Court has ruled that artistic expression of street artists is a human right, and that it's an inalienable right, and if that's the case, then you're sort of obligated to support that position, that that's, you know, your job as, as public servants, as the Constitution is the, you know, the supreme law on the land. And, and what I would say, again, based on my background, is that it also fosters, it's probably the best way to foster grassroots growth in the arts, and Reno is making a big effort in promoting the arts with notions towards economic development and growth, the generator people that were here, many of your projects seem to have issues related to the Art Town projects, and I even got a T-shirt from Art Town, you know, and so my general position to support the arts, in my evaluation, in those general principles I just outlined, that Steve White's submissions seem to support the, that idea, that principle of human right growth and development, and I would support that by also pointing out that that's, by my professors, is considered the best way to generate economic growth. Personally, it allows me to have a little platform and collect a few bucks, and if you, if everybody gets on board here, if any of you guys have a old trumpet, or you used to sing in the shower, or play kazoo or something, you can do so too, and yodel, sing, play a song, put your hat out, and if Keith Richards is playing next to you, you can point out to him, hey, you know, Keith, I've got $4, and you only got $3, you know, that'll give you a few points there.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, and again, thank you very much for your time.
You never want to hear me sing. Thank you.
But you have a right to.
You have a right to. All right. Have no other public comment, have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. That motion carries unanimously. Ms. Damon, nice seeing you with us.